Good evening. Welcome to the Athens City Council City Services Committee meeting. This evening we have a number of items on the agenda, some annexation requests first of all, and then a discussion of Senate Bill 117. Beyond that, perhaps a few comments, miscellaneous, some updates. Okay. So our first is an annexation request on Columbus Road. I actually was in communication at various times concerning this. If you'd like to see the map, the plat, I'll pass it. As you know, we have two sets of rules, one governing extension of water lines, the other extension of sewer lines. And the water line requirement is fairly straightforward. The sewer line requirement requires annexation. And so, not that we couldn't break our own law, but fundamentally, I think that's why we're here. I actually emailed with this fellow quite a bit earlier, maybe eighteen months ago, and so now we're in a position where we're under some certain amount of time. So we have a single plot that's about twenty-some acres, and the petition for annexation is expedited, expedited type 2 annexation. And we have a single parcel, and on April 10th, the Athens County Commissioner accepted the petition for annexation. And the last thing I have, other than the plat, is legally speaking from Gary Hunter, expedited type 2 procedures, and talks about how this would work. Okay. I don't know who represented us when the 20-day thing came through, but for a statutory city such as we are, 20 days ends up being a bit of a problem, as you'll see in a moment. And I also asked for information and input on what would be needed to provide the basic city services. That would be water, sewer, garbage, not garbage, that one wouldn't be too hard, but water, police, and fire. And the chief is here responding to my request for information. So Mr. Preby, if you'd like to speak first, welcome to. Up to there, yeah. Can you give your name and address? Are you the, might tell us if you're the developer or the owner?
No.
The agent. Oh, a free agent. Okay, go ahead. Your address, please, too?
My owner's?
Well, I mean, you can just say Athens City, or I don't care.
Athens Township?
Athens Township, that'll work. I mean, you know, we're not going to come and hunt you down.
Oh, okay.
We'd just like to know where the people who talk to us come from.
Sure. Oh, I'm local, yeah.
Okay. So do you have any comments about this particular?
Yeah, I mean, it seemed pretty straightforward to me, simply because we filed, you know, we went to that county, city-county health department to get septic permit, and, you know, they informed us at that point that since we're so close to the city, we might as well just tie into the city. And then when I did some further investigation, I noticed that everybody in that area, regardless of whether they were in the county or the city, were also, not everybody, that's kind of an overstatement, a lot of people were already getting services, so, in that area.
You're up there by yourself, pretty much, though, right?
Yeah. But, I mean, around us. You know, the business is on Columbus Road and what have you.
Yeah, exactly.
And also regarding water, Lee Axe doesn't service that area either, so.
But that would be a...
Water and sewer, we had no alternative but to get city in order to develop on that hill.
Yeah, all during the winter, everybody kept saying, "What's going in there? What do you know about that?" We kept saying, "No, don't know anything. I just know I emailed you back and forth a few times," I think, in maybe...
Yes, yes. Yeah, we tried to pursue it one way, and then I guess it turned out not to work that way, so that's why we're going this way.
Okay, all right. And is there any plan to subdivide this land further?
No. Nope. The owner's parents actually live on Tendora Lane, in a small house there at the bottom of the hill.
Okay.
Really, it was just a matter of putting a single-family house at the top of the hill, and the parents, the elderly parents, at the bottom of the hill.
Okay.
That's really, simple as that.
Okay. I just wondered exactly how that would work. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Now we'll ask the fire chief, if you would.
Oh, I have a question.
Oh, wait a minute. They have some questions, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah. This is 29 acres, is that what we're looking at right there?
Yeah, 29.94.
Almost 30 acres, and you have a house on the 29, is that it?
Yes.
Okay. And it's in the middle of it, side of it?
No, no, it's just, it's actually right next door to Tendora Lane. So it's off to the one side. At the end of Tendora Lane is a gravel road that goes up the hill.
A very steep slope.
Just partly up the hill.
And you built it before you got a house permit, or?
No, no, this is back before, this is back in August.
Okay.
Yeah. Because at that point, we decided to, well, I talked to a number of people in the city, and they're all pointing me in different directions. And I talked to Ray Hazelid, and he suggested that we do a development agreement. And then I did email you, or Debbie, and then that came back ninety days later, saying that we'd have to annex. They wouldn't be able to do it that way. So we were kind of thinking that it was going ahead, everything was progressing just fine, and only needed a letter back saying that we had to pursue it through different means.
Okay, so you're just requesting annexation now?
Right. Yeah, in order to get services, yes.
Okay.
And I think that I was pretty clear that if you were going to get sewer, you'd have to be annexed, right?
Within two years, you said, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Which we were prepared to do. It didn't matter either way, though.
Yeah, well, and I think, okay. All right, thank you, Paul. Oh, wait a minute, other people have questions. I'm over here, I'm just looking only at him and not at you all. Go ahead, jump in.
Are there any other structures on this property?
No.
Other, just the one new structure?
Yes.
It's a big one.
Yes, I went up. That was the challenge. Yes. Is that a single-family residence?
It is, yes.
Wow.
It's actually being built by the JVS program, the JVS High School, Carpentry Program.
Okay. Because it's got, like, four garages?
Well, it's a three-garage bay, and then, you know, instead of putting a roof on top, we decided to put a, I mean, just some walls up, and you just have another space up there, really. I mean, you know, if they weren't building it, then we probably would constrain ourselves a little bit more as far as the design. But since they were building it, we just figured, you know, I'm giving some of the students an extra task while other students are doing something in the house. It's really just going to give them more to do, honestly.
So I'm looking at this map here, and I assume that this house is somewhere close to the city right-of-way, that's Tendora Lane, right here?
Yes, yes. It's actually right before you get to the end of Tendora Lane. The gravel road goes up the hill.
Way up.
So there's a 1.1-acre part 2 that's owned by Mr. Funk as well, right?
Yeah, or his wife, Christina Gomez, one of the two. I think it's, I don't remember who it's been transferred to.
I guess what I'm asking is how much frontage. In theory, we usually look at a certain amount of frontage on lots.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at this, it's a very strange-looking lot.
I'm not sure.
Big.
And the expectation would be it gets annexed in as a residential, R1, I assume?
I assume, yes. As opposed to?
R2 duplexes, R3 apartment complexes?
No, it's a single-family house. It's not a duplex or apartment complex or anything.
I'm just trying to see where this is going with 38 acres, okay.
No, purely and simply, it just needs water and sewer to the house.
Okay, well, we're just trying to look past that, too.
Sure.
Yeah, they have to pay. Yeah, go ahead.
This is a question for anybody who knows. Is the adjacent residential lots there, are those R1?
You mean up on top of the hill?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, because then that would work. I wouldn't want it to be an R1 up against all those B-zone areas unless it were...
On Peach Ridge, yeah. Cantler's House, do you know where that is? Up there?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
That's kind of my question. The neighboring properties, are they all within the city, or they...
Yeah, essentially, yeah. All three sides are city property.
Okay. And then the other side is the highway?
Yes.
Well, except for the subdivision that's to the north, right? Oak Brook, or isn't, is that outside or inside?
Those apartments?
Yeah, those apartments.
Those are outside, but they get services.
I know. That was the olden days, that was then, this is now.
Oh, so those apartments are actually not near the city?
Outside, the city.
Yeah. And that's what we thought we would just be getting, because they were getting it, and a lot of other people were getting it, but I guess the laws have changed since then.
Yeah. Okay, anyone else, any other questions, since I've got to get a customer turning this way? Okay, thank you very much. We'll ask them.
Thank you.
Now, water and sewer, perhaps the chief has something to say, if you'd like to talk. Chief Bob Troxel from the Athens Fire Department.
One of the issues that we always seem to get into when we annex properties is the ability to provide fire protection. And this area does not have any active hydrants. And the problem we get into is our whole department is designed around using fire hydrants for fire suppression. And without those, we basically can't protect it. We carry 750 gallons of water on our trucks, and we carry 800-foot-of-five-inch hose. Our nearest hydrant is either going up to Oak Ridge Village, where we have to string all the way out to Columbus Road. So... And if you all remember, we used to have two dairy barns. And the reason we don't have two dairy barns is because we don't have adequate water at the dairy. So consequently, that, you know, when we had that fire, we didn't have enough water, and it just basically burnt to the ground. And that's what will happen to any of these structures that we annex into the property, into the city, that we don't have adequate fire suppression water. And I talked with Nick Carr and Nick Joseph today. Their recommendation is to drop a six-inch line over to the driveway to the new property. That way, we can provide a hydrant for that property. Because if we don't have a hydrant there, we're simply not going to be able to provide fire protection. And the problem will even get worse, is if we get an alarm to that, and we do have a structured fire, in good conscience, I can't allow our firefighters to go into structure when we know we don't have any water, if those guys are inside, and we run out of 750 gallons of water, we're going to jeopardize those guys. So, you know, these are serious issues, and these are issues just not for this piece of property, but for any property with the annex into the city is, if there's plans to be structures built on it, we have to have an adequate water supply for that. And if you remember the Cable Lane project, it basically fell apart. That was the primary reason why that fell apart, was we simply did not have adequate water to support those houses that they wanted to build. And again, there is a solution. And it's a very, very simple solution, is simply to put that six-inch.
I had a follow-up question to that. Run a six-inch line from where and out, did they give you a cost estimate?
They didn't give me a cost estimate, but the easiest thing to do is to tee onto the line going into Oak Ridge Village, and simply run it out to street, and stub it out, and place your hydrant right at the, somewhere close to that driveway entrance.
Then that would serve this house and Mr. and Mrs. Funk?
Correct.
And that's about it right now?
Correct. And if you look down the road, in case there ever has to be some, or ever isn't something built on the vacant piece of property, the old motel property, then certainly that provides some rear protection for that property also. But we have to have a hydrant there. I mean, there's, I mean, we can't, we just can't provide fire protection without a hydrant. We're not geared to do that, and, you know, we operate on 99% of our property in the city that is hydrant-based. And that's how we're geared up. And if we have to wait for a tanker from a volunteer fire department, figure 20 to 30 minutes before we get that tanker in operation, it'll be on the ground.
Looks like about 600 feet, just looking at the plat map of distance, if it's, you know, close to the middle of the road.
Do we have a estimate on what a foot costs?
For six-inch? I don't know. Figure maybe.
Well, we can find out.
Yeah, $100. So, okay. And is there any other remedy you'd suggest, chief?
Not really.
In addition to that, I mean, the six-inch line and the hydrant, okay.
That, to me, is probably the least expensive. I know there were some other discussions about running it from the feed line above the four lane, but I think that was going to be excessively expensive. And I think this is certainly the most reasonable to run it this way.
Yeah. I have a question. A couple people mentioned how steep the driveway is. Have you looked at that?
I've been up there.
Can you get your trucks out there?
Yeah, I've driven up, but it's, it's steep. Normally, we will be able to get a truck up there. I don't know. Getting out will be the more difficult issue, how you get turned around and getting out. But we can access it with our vehicles. Obviously, the most concern will be in winter conditions. If it's ice or snow covered, then it's going to be more of a, more of a challenge. But, you know, the driveway is not only steep, but it has that hairpin turn when you get up there, which makes it even more difficult for us. But, you know, it's unfortunate, but, I mean, that's, that's the way it is. You know, we have to have water to fight fire. And I know we've had this discussion, discussion many times in the past, about annexation without fire protection.
All right, this is a clarif, not necessarily for you, actually, but it's understood that the owner pays for these, all these hookups and services, right? Has assessed the...
A tap fee?
...cost of hydrants and happening to the six-inch line, et cetera, et cetera? What is the answer to that question?
I don't know.
I'm not sure that it's understood. I think it's something that we would likely expect.
Mm-hmm.
Subdivision.
If in a subdivision, you would, certainly.
But this is not a subdivision, this is...
It's a single lot.
Well, no. This is a lot of public money.
Yes.
Going into this. So it would seem to me that we would want to have some, have that person pay the services.
Mm-hmm. So it looks like, or at least share, I don't know. Yeah. But is there any other input on that? Yes?
So really what we're talking about is, in terms of this annexation request, is we will list as things we will give or supply. And I'd hate to not include fire, but it sounds like fire's not a practical thing until we get a hydrant and a six-inch line there, unless we can find some way to either get the cost of it, or do it or not do it. I mean, you know.
Well, I certainly hope you don't choose not to do it.
You mean not to provide fire service? No, we wouldn't do that.
Not to provide water, as far as hydrant flow for that structure, because it not only jeopardize our guys, but certainly anybody that happens to be trapped in there, it's going to be, it's going to be an issue. And I certainly would strongly discourage approving that without that hydrant.
So the alternative is not to approve it at all?
No, to me, the logical alternative is to put the hydrant in, and however you choose whether the developer, and is normally the individual, and I certainly don't want to speak to these, these issues that I'm not really familiar with, but I know sitting in many discussions about these, the developer is responsible for providing that. And I think that is a condition of annexation. We did it with Taylor Motors. When they want annexed, the condition was it had to put X number of hydrants in. And we've done it on many annexations, that's part of the annexation agreement.
Yeah. I'd be interested to find out what the cost would be at this point, and, you know, whether the owner is going to, you know, pay for it.
No.
Before we have...
We stipulate.
Wait a second, we're on some kind of accelerated annexation track here, from what I'm hearing. So we have, what, 20 days, is that what I was hearing, huh?
Yeah.
To do this?
From the 10th.
From the 10th.
We have to have it in on 4 on the 7th. Debbie told me, no uncertain terms, 4 on the 7th.
Well, doesn't that mean we would want to negotiate the conditions?
Oh, 7th of May, at 4 o'clock. What did you say? Or 7 on the 4th? Stop it.
Well, I mean, doesn't that, doesn't that mean that we have to be clear about the conditions under which we would annex it, and then the person has the option of choosing to do it or not, right?
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't extension of the line like that require PTI coming to install?
I would imagine so.
Extension of the water service, sir.
But...
We don't know the answer to that until it's approved by PTI, and EPA, so if you want to get a, we can get a rough estimate, but it depends on, do you want our crews to put it in on our time, or do you want them to hire a contractor qualified by EPA or whatever.
Are the funks on a lateral, or are they on a city line?
I don't know.
Okay.
Well, so it sounds like we need more info.
Do we have somebody here who knows that?
Uh-uh.
And is the structure sprinkled?
I doubt it. I didn't see any indication of where it was. It's not sprinkled, is it?
Fire suppression.
Fire suppression.
It's just a sprinkler system.
Well, yeah.
Does it have water?
Yeah, a lot of, you know, a lot of houses have residential sprinklers.
What's the size of this house, total size? It looks fairly big. You have a square footage on it? How much?
3,000.
You should come up to one of the mics, so people at home can hear your answers, if that's okay.
3,000.
There's some at the, there's one at the table, too.
I think it looks bigger than that.
So does it, does the house currently have water?
No.
Okay, so you're not on a water line yet?
No, we have no water.
Okay.
I mean, but Tendora Lane has water, so.
Okay.
When I talked with the water and sewer guy, sorry, I can't remember their names, they both okayed it. They said it was great, no problem. They told me where the tap would go, they told me where the sewer would tie in and everything.
Okay.
It just runs right down Tendora Lane.
But it's, it must not be as big of a line as what we're going to need for the hydrant?
Probably about a two-inch, I would suspect.
And I discussed that with, well, not a six-inch, but a two-inch line. They said they might have to trench down to where Oak Ridge Apartments goes up. And, you know, if we are going to do that, then we would like to do that, and that'd be fine, but...
Okay. And with recent annexations that we've dealt with, we've had a development agreement where it was kind of spelled out, who was going to pay for different things. I mean, is it, before we get into a big discussion just amongst ourselves, you know, the installation of the hydrant, so that there is adequate fire protection, is that something that the property owners, you know, willing to pay for?
If that's what needs to happen, then certainly.
Okay.
I mean, we need to have water and sewer to the house, so.
So we can write up an agreement to attach to the, whatever we have to pass to send back to the county?
I don't know. I mean, I just think we have to say we're going to provide this service, that service, and that service, then we can have our own agreement.
Okay.
I mean, our success with development agreement, I mean, well, we would say we're not, they're at the owner's expense, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And the only thing that I would, having been this route before, is to make certain in the development agreement that this is installed before we occupy the structure. We ran into this issue in other annexation agreements, and actually had to take a legal recourse to see that it was accomplished. So it just would seem to me that we would want this certainly before people occupied.
Okay. So any other comments on this? We have a small problem with timing, and the time constraints. Thank you, chief, it's appreciated.
There is some expedited annexation.
Well, because the state allows it.
Well, and the person requested it?
Yes. Thank you, chief.
Doesn't it mean we just have to write up an agreement with these conditions, and if they sign, if they sign, if they don't, it's kind of simple.
Well, we have to put in a very specific ordinance, don't we, Debbie, which would say we are going to provide water, sewer, garbage, or, and basically, all cities, fire and police protection. And so, and then it'll come back to us for a second round, for a second vote.
At the owner's expense. See, the language of we're going to provide services.
Well, I agree. I mean, I...
I mean, can we say, there is, there are certain conditions under which annexation will occur. And if these are met, then we will go forward with annexation.
Well, this is step one, and then we'll have a second step later on, where we'll have a second vote on it. We, what we do is, and, you know, I didn't write this law, and I didn't make the 20-minute rule, but 20, 20-minute rule, that's what it seems like, the 20-minute rule. But, you know, it's the same with the next one, with, you know, whether we have water and sewer adequate out to the Holzer's property site is the next question, you know? It's been, 20, 20 days isn't a whole bunch, so. We will bring it back with, we'll discuss a time when we could meet with these things on it. The water and sewer would be at the owner's expense, including the connection, the tap fee.
And the hydrant.
And the water line.
Yeah, I was wondering if we're putting a hydrant in that would be used by three properties, if we would charge the whole thing to this particular property. I mean, you know, not that I want to be easy on them or anything, but it would seem to me that some part of it would have the larger public interest in.
Two other families' interests.
Well, I mean, this is a very big piece of property, it's on Columbus Road, and it would be an improvement to that one. It's about three acres. You could see commercial development there. I mean, if we had more time, we could get more. Any ideas on that? No? You don't care? You don't want me to?
Well...
Hydrants cost around, what, 750, 800, 1,000?
It's the water line that's more expensive, huh?
Well, that's because it's going a distance, yeah.
Right, right, right. I, I would be encouraged to want to say, you know, write up some agreement conditions of annexation, and I can look at it and discuss it.
Okay. If I understand the procedure here, what we're talking about is, we are supposed to get something to the county commissioner saying what we will, services we will provide. We could put a condition on that, that the developer has to pay for portions of this or all of it. Then at that point, they release it, and then we take a choice. Our next gatekeeping event is when we, if I understand it correctly, accept annexation or not. Is that the case?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's our second.
It's all here, the flowchart, so.
Yes, yes. So the question I'm raising is, do we actually, will have a development agreement in place before then? That's what you're expecting to happen? Answer.
No, I don't think we need a development agreement. I think we need, I don't...
A condition of annexation.
Yeah. So maybe we can ask Gary to provide this for us? You know what we want, right, Gary?
You would include the conditions in the annexation order.
Okay. The second one or the first one? Okay. And so, and you're sure that, all right, so the first one, and we'll have the minutes reflect this. And if the second ordinance does not reflect that reality, then we won't vote it through. Okay. Anybody have poems?
I would still like to see something in the first, this first provision. I think Bojinko's saying the same thing. Somewhere in there, in our annexation, that there's going to be, we're not paying for the water line, I guess is the line law.
Okay. I mean, I think that we will do it within the confines. I mean, you would just say, the typical one would be all city services. That would be the way it would be written, in some of ours from the past. Sometimes we specified only police and fire. So this one would say, can you figure out how to say that, Debbie?
So that it's not an approval.
It isn't an approval.
No.
This is step one.
Yeah, I know, but the step one...
This is like an if reservation. If we accept this property for annexation, we will provide these services with this condition.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I want here.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, and the same, so thank you. I guess you know very foggy what's going to happen. Well, we're going to send it back to the courthouse, and then they will release it, and then they'll see us again.
So this is...
And if you want a copy of this here, be my guest.
He has a copy.
Does he want a copy?
He's got one.
He got one, okay. Thank you. Next item is an annexation request on East State Street for the Holzer Clinic. And you'd like to come and speak?
Sure.
Hi, my name is Sierra Meek, and I'm an attorney with Michael Nolan in Nelsonville, Ohio. And we are representing Holzer Medical Center in the annexation process here. And basically, I'm here today just to give you, give the council notice that we have not filed an annexation yet, but we do plan on filing the annexation, a type 2 expedited annexation, on May 7. And because the type 2 is such a quick process, we wanted to go ahead and give you a heads-up right now, saying that, yes, we do plan on filing a type 2 annexation for this East State Street property, so that if you have questions, we can go ahead and get things going. And then on May 7, we will file the annexation petition with all the necessary plats and descriptions, and we will also file a proposed development agreement with that, so that Gary Hunter will have something to look at and approve, disapprove by your 20-day limit. The property that we're talking about is at the very end of East State Street. I believe there's an AutoTech and some other things down... I believe there's an Auto-Tech and some other things down in that area. It's a, the property that was bought by Holzer is approximately 64-acre property, more or less. And it's 18, 18 acres of this property is already in the city limits. So, the building, medical building that Holzer plans to put on this property, the line for the city actually goes through the medical building, where we plan on putting the medical building. So, obviously, we're hoping to have, have water and sewer and fire and police protection for the entire building and not just for half of the building. So, that's why we would like to annex this entire, the rest of this, this property, which is another 40 or so acres. A lot of this property is open space. It's kind of undevelopable, undevelopable land at this point. But we are asking to annex the entire property so that if, in future time, other people that are contiguous with this property would like to annex, then they would be able to do so.
In-Town Body Shop is not on that property, is it?
She said Auto-Tech.
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 Other side.
Oh, okay. Any other questions?
Well, is it the same thing, I'm sorry, about the cost of the services?
I think there's a water line out there, isn't there?
Well, I don't know if they're adequate, though. I don't know what a place... See, the trouble with you saying we're gonna annex 40 additional acres in case somebody else wants to come into the city, then how would we know what size water line and sewer line you'd need to anticipate this? I mean, isn't that a little bit of a stretch for us, since you're out at the edge of our service area?
Well, we don't anticipate to, to annex any more than up to the end of the, the medical building area. Well, we don't anticipate to, to need water beyond that point. I just, and obviously, it's, it's a city council matter to, whether or not they wish to annex the entire, entire parcel. But because it's one contiguous parcel, if somebody on the other side of that, at some later point, wants, wants to extend the water lines at their expense or, or in some type of fashion, then, basically, it's up to whether or not somebody else wants, and up to the council whether or not they want to annex that property. But because it's one, one large parcel, it's been suggested that we annex the entire parcel.
And approximately, how much would you be occupying as a, as an entity of the total acreage? Which you said was 40, right?
There's 18 that's already in the city limits. There would be another 40, approximately 46 that we would be requesting to annex in.
So, basically, Holzer owns all of the property?
That's correct. The entire 64 acres.
Yeah.
But then we would be promising to provide water, sewer, blah, 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 to...
How much is this in the floodway or floodplain? I guess that's the next question.
The back, there are back portions of this property that are in the floodplain.
And that's part of the 64, I assume, right?
That is part of the 64, that's correct.
So, it goes all the way to the river?
That's correct.
I have another question. It's probably more for Nancy.
Go ahead.
So...
Do you think I know anything about this? I just know that we've had, we've been extending, you know, piecemealing water and sewer extensions out there. I just don't know how this will feel with it.
I'm just playing with hell, you see?
But in terms of any other development on these acres that we were saying, since the hospital won't occupy all of it, and they'll be additional parts of the parcel, do we have control over, over what gets developed there? That is my question. You don't know? Huh?
Depends what we zone it for.
Okay.
I actually heard you say that it would be if additional parcels further down the road were interested in annexing, that services would be closer. You're not proposing additional development on the land beyond the, the Holzer facility, are you?
That's correct. That's all we're proposing is the medical building. We're not, the, the Holzer Medical Building and the property line is, would, at this point, is open space and mostly waterland and...
So, would you put in the development agreement that the only facility on this parcel will be the Holzer one?
We're currently looking at subdividing, subdividing part of this portion, part of this property, but that's closer towards the city, not towards the, the easterly side. And, but on that parcel, we will, we would only put the medical building. The closer parcels, there is some discussion about putting another type of medical building in that area. But those, those plans haven't been formally...
Once again, I'll ask, how can we, I mean, we're at the edge of our services. How can we possibly anticipate what would be needed in terms of water and sewer? Well, I mean, if there's sort of this unlimited space that you're thinking about...
The, the property that we're talking about that's subdivided, and without a map, it's difficult. But the property that we're talking about that would be subdivided would be inside the city limits already. And so, there is already a water tap up to that point, from my understanding. Is that correct?
When the overall haze development was put in, we sized the water line to go through all of the area that he was because on East State Street, we have, and the reservoir is not very far away here. And that's a large water line that's there. More than adequately serves that, that area for water services. Sewer size was also, because the Holzer Clinic plans have been presented, they've been reviewed by the Water and Sewer Division. There's no problem in providing sewer services, even if another parcel is, tell that between Holzer and the office building complex. Water and sewer is adequate there. Now, future, all you would have to do, do is have an easement through the entire Holzer plot or plat next to the highway. Any future development, if that ever did occur, would then be able to use that easement area and at their expense, would put the water in the sewer. It's just, if, if you don't annex the whole parcel, they have to subdivide it because you can't really annex part of a parcel. And secondly, you then leave Holzer with an undevelopable piece of property that actually controls whether or not the city can ever annex any more property on that side of the highway, which doesn't seem like the thing to do to me. Why cut yourself off?
Would you repeat what you said about if we do not annex it, then blah, blah, blah? I can't remember. It seemed like...
If you, if you decide to annex only a portion of the property, you're gonna have to replat that portion so that, because you can't, you need platted property in its entirety either in or out of the city. That's what you're doing with the other one, the 39 acres. You could go in and say to the gentleman, oh, cut off four acres there because we don't want to make a commitment toward those other 30-some acres. And that's, you know, that's council's prerogative to do that. All I have suggested to Holzer is rather than cutting off just at the end of their parking lot, give us the opportunity, in case anything ever does develop out in that way that currently is not served by water or sewer, that the possibility is there.
But it's in the floodway, most of it, isn't it?
Sure, well, it wouldn't happen on that Holzer property because it is a, under a clomar, and that's the barrel pit area, which is all going to be floodway. They're using all of the available raised property.
But all of it is on a, is on, I'm not through yet. All of it is on a, an access ramp to the highway, too, isn't it? I mean, is this the way to plan a city, where you have the whole entrance on an access ramp?
Do whatever you want.
I don't think that's a very strategic thing to say to me. I must be because I have this name in front. This is Nancy Bayne. She's asking you what she thinks is a reasonable question.
You're outside of the limited access portion of the highway at that point. There is potential there to do it. I mean...
Well, you know, I just don't like that response. All I want to know is, if we're talking about a huge new development out there, then I would like to know. I mean, is this a pig in a poker, what? That's what I want to know. That's all I'm trying to find out.
Your paranoia is showing. There's no pig in a poker at all. You either annex the whole property, you ask them to subdivide it and annex a portion that's gonna have the building and the property on it. It's your choice.
Well, I'd like more information. Well, go ahead. How about it? See if you can do better.
Well, I think one of the issues that is probably in some people's mind is that, you know, the comprehensive plan did recommend not to continue the expansion of the city out along the, the river corridor, along East State Street. But rather, you know, propose that there are other directions we should be looking at if we're gonna be annexing. So, that this question of then whether we want to continue annexing other properties in the future is a fairly controversial one because I, I think that the community had a lot of input in that discussion about thinking that it was not necessarily a good idea to continue the floodplain development and filling of the flood hazard area. So, it touches on things that have been discussed fairly extensively in the community. I don't think that means, I mean, I, I think that there's a lot of support in general for the Holzer project itself. So, I think that getting into discussion about future annexation further down the road might be part of what's difficult in this conversation. I, I also think that this expedited annexation process makes it difficult because when we can, the, the annexation that we had for the Hampton Inn, we had a development agreement that we had time to look at the details in the development agreement and get all the questions answered about, you know, the curb cut onto East State Street and how that was gonna work, and was the Service Safety Director happy with how that was all being handled? We had time to have that conversation before the, the final annexation was coming back to us. So, this 20 days, I think, is what makes it really difficult because there are legitimate questions about making sure that this is, this is all gonna be done appropriately for the site. So, I, I think my question to you is whether it has to be this expedited annexation. I mean, couldn't we see the development agreement in time to get a handle on the, the things that you're asking of the city? The things you want from the city, the commitments you want from us, and the things that the developers are gonna do to meet their obligations, to make sure the project's done right? You know, just, can we get that information ahead of time? Could you look at the normal annexation process so people can get their questions answered and not feel under the kind of pressure that makes it feel so tense?
Well, as I said, we planned on providing the development agreement with the petition so that you would have those 20 days to review it. The development...
Case isn't enough.
The, the development agreement has been drafted, though. It is still in a draft stage, but I could get a copy to you sooner.
That would be very helpful.
So that you, so that everybody could take a look at what that development agreement looks like.
Go.
Okay, now, this is really a question for other council people, too. This is really close to the river, isn't it? And, and I notice we're building, we seem to be building a lot of medical facilities near water resources. And I'm just curious, I mean, EPA must have standards and, for those kinds of things, doesn't it? I, I mean, medical facilities have a lot of hazardous stuff.
Well, that stands, I mean, it's true. You go down to, go down to the clinic they have now at the upper part of the river, and there's a big red box there, and that's a hazardous medical waste box. And you hope somebody would move it if it ever floods.
Well, what I'm saying is, so there are a lot, so I'm just wondering, you know, are there, can you, because it's so well protected?
Yes, I can address that. The medical industries are governed by a regulatory body that just deals with them. They are very regulated in terms of their waste disposal and the, the medical waste especially. So, it is very carefully regulated. It's regulated, but it sits in a box, and it was waste of, they come along and pick it up, just like other garbage. It's just a different garbage stream, you know, so it's not like they're out there with a...
Well, why is this not on the ground?
Well, it is on the ground. The red box is on the ground. But, I mean, that's along the whole, the whole area. That's, all right. Well, when you're doing your annexation fee, I was hoping that you could tell us what your, how you estimate your tap fees, what's your estimate your tap fees will be for the facility?
I don't actually have that information.
Well, it would be good to be in there, so we know exactly.
Sure.
And that would be reflective of how much water and sewer you'll be using. Because once again, we're talking about a somewhat controversial action here.
Nancy?
Yes, talk.
Okay. Also, I'd like some clarification. At one point, you were saying we're not going to divide it up, and then I hear you, you're talking about dividing portions of it up. I'd like to see the breakdown of that. Not so much for the water, just how the patent's going, because it sounds like a contradiction to say we're not gonna divide this part, but we're gonna divide this part. And I don't know how that, I'd like to see a, more like a plan of what you, what you think that's gonna look like in terms of that entrance and the traffic flow in there. Because you have some kind of plan in place.
Because that's why we actually do this, I think, so we anticipate for the public any problems that will arise. Not to be obnoxious or anything.
Yeah.
It may feel like that, but we're just trying to do our job.
Right, and like I said, this information will be provided as part of the petition, and I realize that, that council is a little stressed out about the 20-day petition.
We are.
Well, okay, yeah, I realize...
But it's not your problem.
But the default 20 days could be, we don't give any services until we figure it out, 24 days later. So, you know, that would not be the way to go either. I mean, if there's, you know, we, you're assuming the 20 days is a total loss switch. It could be a total loss switch, too. So, there's different ways of looking at this, okay? And I agree that the comprehensive plan talked about going in another direction, not building in our, our floodplain. As for the biohazard stuff, I think if it really floods and starts flooding away, that would be the least of our worries.
Yeah.
So, but it will be one of the many, okay? But at the same time, I, I see what you're saying about the, the building of medical facilities in the flood zone.
Anybody else? Anybody on the other side? Oh, Debbie, go ahead, and then Jim, and...
Mine's real quick. I just want to thank you for coming here early and for your willingness to provide that draft agreement ahead of time. That will help us get through this. Thank you.
I was just gonna ask that in that draft, you will provide, I hope, a, a map that shows this additional 40-some acres in relationship to what's already annexed and, and so we can distinguish where the filled area versus the already disturbed clomar area and the undisturbed flood area up to the east. That would help our task, I believe.
Okay. I, I know that the, the most recent draft of the map that I saw shows the floodway line. I don't know that it shows the fill area, but I can see if we can get that on that map.
Because that's where you're gonna build.
That's correct, on the, on the fill area.
That helps us locate in our minds where this is gonna happen.
Thank you, Sierra. All right. Next thing is Scott, you're on, to talk about Senate Bill 117. I'm sorry, I'm gonna take an hour or whatever.
Best, Matt Green to come out with me, and since he was in on our initial conversation with the Alliance for Community Media in our phone conference. I know you've received a lot of information in your mailboxes in the past week or so in regards to this, so we can either, I can either answer some questions, or there is a video that some cable stations around Ohio have put together that I'd like to show. It just kind of goes to some of the urgency of, of what this bill is gonna do to these cable stations, including the government channel and access ACT in town. If we can show that first, I'd appreciate that, and then we can...
I'd like to also add that it's not just, you know, PEG stations, public access education government. It'll affect the city right away, which you probably all read that, so.
Which is a main concern.
That's why.
Now we can unlock his password.
That's why they have those little things there. That's for that reason.
You know, we'd lose an awful lot through this bill.
I just don't see that being a benefit. That's, that's, to me, a detriment. This is getting driven by big business, and the, the local governments are really losing a lot of their rights.
Corporate America should actually be user-friendly to communities, not seen as the enemy of communities.
SB 117 has a number of...
SB 117 has a number of troubling sections in it. The approach of SB 117 is irrational, and it's calculated simply to give money to the cable operators. To me, though, the whole taking away of power from the local communities is just the wrong attitude to take. Right off the bat, SB 117 attempts to modify 4939 of the Ohio revise code, which is essentially Ohio's public rights of way control law and governing statute.
When they start to say to me that you, the city of Wadsworth, don't have a right to control your streets and your rights of way, that's wrong.
When we talk about the right-of-way ordinance, that's very important.
Well, we would lose local authority.
What people don't realize is the right-of-way is actually your tree lawn.
Right now, the cable company, when they want to put a box in or they want to do something, they come to the city and they have to get a permit.
Every city, they have, they have a process to control the local right-of-way. They use it in the city streets.
We don't have that. We're just going to look a mess.
I'm not so sure that the folks of Wadsworth would, would like very much to have these boxes sitting in their front yard.
You could have this box that is about five foot tall, four foot wide, sitting anywhere that they plan on putting it in.
And when you keep taking tools out of our toolbox, we don't have anything to build with.
Get approval from the local government to do these things so that we know when they are going to do them, where they are going to do them. That's what we require businesses to do, and why should they have some type of super seniority?
I don't understand how a state office could help ensure that street cuts are done in an orderly fashion and that after a telecommunications company is done cutting up the streets, that it's repaired and put back to some version of what was there before they cut holes in it.
In addition to those public rights of way issues, SB 117 attempts to modify the way that franchise fees are calculated in local communities.
Well, it's interesting because the bill purports to maintain a similar scheme to that that's in effect now, but in reality, it's going to result in a 10 to 15 to possibly 20 percent reduction in franchise fees in many communities.
Then, just to give you an example, with the redefinition of what a franchise fee is, the city of Dayton alone last year would have lost over $180,000. That's just the city of Dayton.
We're talking about the exclusion of advertising revenue, which is a large component of cable franchising fees and gross revenue valuation, the loss of home shopping and the loss of certain other components.
So in a city such as the city of Cleveland, for example, that could be an impact of a quarter million dollars a year easily. That franchise fee has been invaluable to the city of Wadsworth.
Oh, my God, the free cable. I mean, the in-kind services.
A service that had been provided by the cable operator ever since I've been accessing the television is a free cable drop to the schools.
We have 11 schools in Menno that would lose free cable service.
Schools like the Dayton, public schools cannot afford to pay for every cable drop from all of the different schools that they're currently receiving at. So the cable in the classroom would be turned off along with the cable dropped.
We have three libraries that would lose free cable service. We have approximately seven city buildings that would lose free cable service. Our fire department will lose the INET. It's the way that our fire stations communicate with each other for training purposes and also for a program that they call Live on Five.
In the future, with the language in SB 117, there is a grave concern that we will have a situation where there will only be three access channels for a regional area.
And one of the things in the bills is the three PEG channels per head end.
Our head end is on the west side of Cleveland, which literally serves over 100 suburbs.
We have a school channel, and we have a community college channel, and we have our government channel. That's one community. And then there's the community down the street that also has a school channel and a government channel.
Are we all going to be relegated to three only channels and have every one of those 100 communities provide their programming on that channel? Well, then, obviously, there's not enough.
We would all lose that individual voice.
Government access provides the opportunity for citizens to participate directly in the government by seeing in real time what is happening at council meetings.
There is no other way that we would have to be able to get our message out. Right here at the city of Dayton, we have a show called Talk Live, the city hall, where commissioners and the mayor, we can go, and citizens is a live call-in show.
What are the issues that a city manager and the council wrestles with on behalf of the citizens to make sure that they make appropriate decisions?
We had a gentleman at one of our township trustee meetings who came up, literally in his pajamas, because he was angered over something that was said at the meeting and couldn't take it anymore. He was sitting in bed watching it. He jumped out of bed in his pajamas, came up to the meeting, and spoke his mind. The facility allows the school to communicate with the community more effectively.
You actually have an eye not only into the city government, but also an eye and a ear right inside the local school system, which is invaluable, in my opinion.
I think having parades and having church services on community access is important to the seniors, because they're, they're not able to get out and need all these type of things.
We make use of access. It's what we call a ministry to our sick and shutting.
My Bible study goes out to a lot of people, a lot of people who are shut in, who can't get out to church, who can't get out to Bible studies. I know they watch it.
Right now, DATV has over 600 members who are actively involved in public access programming here in Dayton.
We probably do almost 2,000 programs a year.
They can attend board of education meetings. They can attend the county commission, the city commission. They can attend parades. They can see a lot of public events entirely that they wouldn't get to see otherwise.
Oh, and then what I really love is live, unrepeated broadcasting a day.
In addition, an additional item in regards to public access, which seems to be, or provide a significant amount of concern, is the requirement that if a community is granted an access channel under SB 117, that they be required to program that access channel with a certain amount of content that is non-repeated and original.
I mean, not even the affiliates.
That's just a standard that is unobtainable by anybody and is only set up for us to fail and for them to take back the channels.
So for them to say they're going to stifle the citizen's right to speak by saying that they have to have 80 percent new programming per day is totally ridiculous when they don't even abide by those own standards themselves.
Customer service standards, that's one of the biggest issues that we, that we have within the city.
They're not calling the Department of Commerce. They're calling the city of Dayton, saying, "This is happening with my cable business, and I'm tried to call."
Customer service standards are pretty much out the door and says that if there is a competitive wireline video provider in the community, you can't enforce any customer service standards at all. Once two providers are in your community, there are no customer service standards.
That's another tool that's taken away for us to be progressive and maintain oversight of what is happening in the best interest of our citizens.
The idea of competition and bringing this whole bill around is to, in my mind, expand the availability to everyone, and this actually is doing quite the opposite. It's possibly taking away the right or the availability of the services to specific groups of people.
There's no benchmarks, and there is no accountability.
There's specific language in SB 117 that fails to require, in other words, does not require, the video service providers or cable companies to serve everyone in the community.
Basically, what's going to happen is that companies are going to go to the people that can provide or can pay, you know, $100 to $150 a month for, for video services. And we don't think that's fair.
It's important, when you're looking at public monies, that communities have the ability to conduct an effective audit of those payments.
We have audited our cable company in the past, and we have found that there were funds that were not paid to the city.
It basically says that the expense lies with you. If you find out there's a discrepancy, there's not an automatic payment back, you have to take them to court. You can only go back two years. You have to bring an action in court within two years to attempt to recover underpaid franchise fees. And it says you can't engage in a contract with anybody who's going to do it on a contingent fee. There are so many steps involved with that process to get them to do something that they're supposed to be doing. I would assume that ultimately, you're going to overspend the little bit that you might have found that they were underpaying you by all the legal fees.
Home rule is being challenged here on every level, from the right-of-way ordinance to, to our ability to negotiate.
Isn't there some other way to bring in new business without, in a sense, giving up the entire local municipality control?
It wasn't written by state and local politicians. It was brought to them by the cable and the telephone company.
We have working franchise agreements with the cable operator that would provide the perfect framework for AT&amp;T to enter into agreements with all of the cities.
We're going to contact every, every state senator that lives in the jurisdiction that our programs go to and let them know that this is not a good bill, and I hope that all the citizens who watch our channel do the same thing.
So Scott, you ready to answer questions? Okay, anybody? Anybody on one? Yeah, go ahead.
This was obviously anti, you know, can you sum up in maybe three sentences what this bill proposes? This talks a lot about why it's bad, but, I mean, basically, it proposes, you know, three or four things.
It changes higher revise code in regards to what municipalities can do with the right-of-way, how they can control it.
But what does that mean?
Oh, basically, it says that cities have no say in what goes into the right-of-way and any kind of...
It's going to be more state-controlled than locally-controlled.
But, I mean, total right...
The boxes, think about the boxes.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. In other words, like, we don't mean right-of-way for everything, like, certain aspects of right-of-way. That's, that's what I was looking for some more clarification on.
Right. I mean, and the other thing it does, and then the big thing for access, it changes the definition of gross revenue, which can affect your franchising, your percentage, the money you bring in. Right now, there's a maximum of 5 percent gross revenues. By redoing the definition of gross revenue, like the video said, you stand to lose an estimated 15 to 20 percent of the money that's coming in just by the change in definition or home shopping channels aren't included in that and some other things.
I guess my question is, like, does it basically say that there's more, more competition, more cable companies can compete?
That's what...
Limits? I guess what I'm saying is, yeah, I mean...
That's basically what the lobbyists have said, yeah. We're going to bring more competition in. Like, here in Athens, we have one cable provider. Some cities have more than Time Warner. They may have Time Warner, SBC, AT&amp;T, Verizon.
Right.
They're already competing. With this, you know, if you have two cable providers there, there's not going to be any more competition than there is now.
Right.
Okay, so it would allow more cable providers into the, into the community?
Well, we're not, well, the thing is, we're not excluding cable providers now from coming in.
Okay.
Basically, if this goes through as is right now, all negotiated contracts, franchises within the state will be null and void. So money will stop coming in from whatever entity is already providing around the state. You would have to renegotiate, however long that takes, so that there's a money factor. The other thing is, they talked about up in Dayton and in the bigger metropolitan areas, they have numerous communities that funnel back to what they call one head end, or one hub where the cable signal is dispersed. And each of those communities has a PEG, a public access, a government access, and educational access. Well, if the definition of head end, you stand to lose, I think in Dayton, they said they'd lose 85 channels, and they'd get three, because each of, it'd be like Nelsonville having a PEG, and Athens having a PEG, and Albany having a PEG. Well, that would go way down to just one set of PEG for everybody. The other way they get you is by defining the number of hours that you have to provide original programming per day. Nine and a half hours of original programming every day is just unheard of.
I also think it weakens the redlining provision, so I think it would reduce the availability of service in poor communities, and it makes it so you can't require service to public buildings, and a lot of schools rely on free service that they currently receive under franchise agreements, and that would no longer be allowed to be required in franchise agreements. So there are a lot of things in it. I think we got a ton of documentation on why it's bad.
Right.
I think it would make sense to go ahead and pass the resolution opposing it and to also make a contribution to Local Voice Ohio out of our current cable franchise fee. We've got $123,000 unappropriated in that fund right now, and they have a, the Local Voice Ohio folks have a suggestion based on population of the city on what we should contribute toward the effort to fight it. So I don't know if we should come up with our own number or look at their, their suggested contribution level.
So is everybody in agreement with the first of her proposals, that we will go forward with the boilerplate?
I do have a question now, and it sort of addresses what Vajinkya was asking. Am I correct that today was the day for the pro arguments on the state level?
This was the opposition level today. Proponent was last Tuesday.
Really? So the pros have already done, because when I went online, it sounded like it was the other way around.
The 17th was the proponents, and this week, I don't know if it was today, but I'm pretty sure this week is...
Yeah, it's... It's real soon. I mean, basically, when they say, this is being fast-tracked through the Senate, I mean, this really has, I think it was, the first reading was on, was March 17th or 15th? Yeah.
I knew that, but I just sounded the other way around.
We're like 30 days through three readings, so that's quick.
Okay.
I agree, we should do something about this. At the same time, I think what Vajinkya's asking and what's, why, okay, besides the lobbyists pushing it through, what is their argument for, what are the pros? I mean, right now, you know, just so we've heard...
I was going to say, what is it? Does it say all things must be negotiated at the state level? In other words, what is the body, the three key things that the bill says it will do? It doesn't say, oh, we're going to slash franchise states.
Well, I think you have to keep in mind where this bill's coming from. It was written by AT&amp;T.
I know.
And AT&amp;T's argument is that they can't get into the video business because of the roadblocks of franchising with each individual municipality.
So what does it then say?
It takes the municipalities out of the loop, basically.
It says that, that any cable company, I'm just trying to understand what the bill says. Does it say that cable companies do not have to go through municipalities, they can simply set up their systems wherever they want? Is that what the bill says?
Basically, yeah. There's a request that's just a...
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
There's an application to the municipalities, I think. I don't know the exact language, but basically, if the municipality says no, they can't say no. It's just, it's more of a casual, notice that we're coming.
It's a preemption.
All right. It takes the decision-making power away, and therefore, it takes some of the financial benefit away because the negotiation is not with the municipality. Is that correct? I'm just trying to understand.
You can still, you can still negotiate a franchise.
Yeah.
But it will be, you know, you have to go through that process, and that's not a quick process by any means.
And you're still going to have to abide by these new regulations set at the state level with the nine and a half hours of programming every day. HBO can't even reach that standard. But they don't reach that standard.
Right. Yeah, I understand all the negatives, but, so I understand the programming, and I understand But as I say, the actual, here's the three things that the bill is going to do.
It's going to, it's going to drive PEG out of business.
Well, I meant from a positive perspective.
I haven't, I don't...
The bill doesn't say, the bill doesn't say, "We're going to drive them out of business." The bill says, "We're going to do X, and we're going to do X."
We're going to make it so efficient.
But that's not what the bill says.
We're going to make it so efficient, no more fooling around with local government.
It's okay. I know, but that's not the wording in the bill. I just wanted to see what it proposed positively. Not that I'm saying it is a positive thing, but the bill has to say, you know, "Decisions will now be made this way. Yes, you need nine and a half hours of programming and something else." And I would just, it would be helpful if we knew what that was so we could let it just all get all negative. But I'm going to be negative, but I understand it.
The bill analysis would be really easy to find on the state website if you look at legislature.state.oh.us.
Okay.
And search Senate Bill 117. The official bill analysis is right there.
And it's only 22 pages long.
Okay. Well, that's what I mean. Nobody can explain it. That's okay. I'd just like to know that we could explain it before we vote. That's all.
It would be easy to vote against it.
Do we know, I don't remember off the top of my head what our annual franchise payment is, and this, the Local Voice Ohio coalition is suggesting a contribution of 3 percent of a community's franchise. payment.
So your job before next meeting is to help on that?
I'm not sure what the full payment is. I know what I get as a budget, but not what the city gets.
Okay, so I'm going to... We'll put this up for first reading, or first through three. When does it have to be done?
As soon as possible.
Soon as possible?
Yeah, well, I mean, the thing is, it's going through the Senate so fast that everybody's playing catch-up on it.
It's going to be a matter of asking the governor to veto it, I think, ultimately.
It's...
If they are fast-tracking it, we're not going to get this...
After spending 20-some years listening, every time we have an executive session about the cable company, they have so much power, and they constantly stipulate this, take away that, stipulate this, take away more and more power from the local area. I mean, those of you who've been on for a while know that we have no control. Next, and so I just think it's a way to say, local control's important.
Okay, so...
For me, but that's my own reason. I don't need to have those.
No, I think that's good.
All right, so I'm going to skip over this. We talked a bit about, in the back room, about restroom and the floodway.
Well, but did we answer the question of when this has to be done?
As soon as possible, which means it's not today.
They asked for it by April 17.
Well, I know.
Well, it's not going to be done. I mean, we're just, as Debbie said, the veto...
They'll still go to the House after this, so there's still a point in doing it.
We can add Jimmy Stewart, and because Joy Page is the one referenced in the boilerplate code.
I've had Joy, and I've spoken to Jimmy, and Jimmy is...
Tell him it's coming.
Basically, on the side that everybody here is on. He pretty much opposes this.
Okay. So the next meeting, it will be on the agenda, waiting for your approval. All right, now, I have taken an hour and 10 minutes, mostly not even realizing how long these things are going to be. So I have on my agenda a couple of more items, the restroom and the floodway. I don't know what kind of support there is for that. I'm concerned about it being on that side of the pathway. I may be the only one. If you are interested in talking to me about it, you can do it later. EPA, I have a stack of paper this thick. I just looked at, and I'm going to leave it on the back table. Those of you who are interested can try and figure out what's going on. As of right now, I have no action required.
What is it?
It's a drainwell closure, and it seemed to take us to a new position, but that may not be the case. I have 17th of April. Here they are. They're going to be on the back table. I would just soon finish up my agenda and go on to finance and personnel. Just updates, a couple, two, three things. I just want to say these things very quickly and then pass it on. I don't want any more. Solid Waste District, we had not enough... We didn't have enough people for a forum. The Athens County Commissioners were interested in both composting and especially in the solid waste pickup, or hazardous waste pickup. And the hazardous waste pickup has even come up to Commissioners, and so there is a heightened awareness in our community. So I asked them to look. I said, I can't imagine us having this event in the fall and turning away people who have materials, because, you know, who knows where it will end up? Almost certainly in the city if they bring it into the city. So, you know, I asked them to participate, but we couldn't action anything, do any action, so that'll be coming. I asked Ray Hazlitt to tell me if he wanted any adjustments to the tenant education form a couple of times. I don't think anything has happened on that yet, but I also checked on the fees for landlords, and I'll go back and get an update on that. There was quite a sizable list. It does strike me as odd that all of these people who do front-end loading charges on their rent, in other words, the students are through paying their rents by February, are not able in February to pay the fee for their rental permit. They can't pay it in March, they can't pay it in April, and I guess I'd like to get on making them treat us with some seriousness about paying that fee. Teresa Carter was fabulous and gave me the information. Debbie got it for me, and I thank her for that. Yes?
Okay, so do you have a percentage of how many are...
I don't have a... Well, I don't know. I'd like to know what percentage are being prosecuted. That would be my question.
I thought we did a late fee for them.
There is a late fee.
But it's not high enough, so that it's not...
Apparently, it's not high enough. Yeah, I'll bring back the numbers next time.
We discussed it the last time, maybe that it wasn't high enough.
Yeah. Well, I think that it's, they're supposed to now be going to court with them. Also, there's another one that where the landlord is selling the property, the landlord has many properties, and he owes us mega bucks, and I asked several times to have, make sure that we collect those before we reassign to the new owner. Somebody's got to pay, because they owe us money. I mean, it's, I'm tired of being last on the list on this, so...
One of the things that came up in that Gainesville, Florida, plan, the river plan, was actually revocation of suspension of rental permits for a certain amount of violations.
That's why I brought this up.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Going down that road of thinking about, you know, does everybody have an absolute right to just thumb their noses at us, not do their, pay their fees, not be there when the guys come to do the inspections and otherwise mistreat? Okay? Yeah.
Okay. Couple of comments backing up a bit. I just wanted to comment in terms of the restroom. I would think that it would be very helpful to all of you to read carefully what those plans are and then decide for yourself if that's appropriate. They certainly have gone to great lengths to plan a facility that's raised out of the floodway. It's right on the edge, anyway, so part of it really...
It's five feet from the pass.
Right. And to go and look at the site...
Or look at it from the river, because you can see it on the other side as well.
Right. But I... Part of the question is the other options, and there are other options. There's the option of bringing onsite portable toilets for every event and taking them away.
Haven't you ever heard Bill's story about the time his porta potty went down the river? No, that's even less of an option, sorry.
And the other is to place the thing in the parking lot on the other side of the railway and the...
There's a depression on that side.
Yes, which makes it quite far from the facility. I think they have been very conscientious in trying to create something that was responsible, but I think that's for each person to judge.
Carol, where are the plans if we want to look at them?
On the table?
Here?
Yeah, on the table, and there's, I don't, I think I have them here as well.
And could it be, if it's in the floodway, could it be designed with flow-through instead of fill to elevate it?
Yes. They, that's, they have like a couple of different plans. They've had considerable engineering done, and it certainly is worthy of considering.
Yeah, I think if it's going to be in the floodway, the main concern is making sure water can keep moving.
The flow-through. Absolutely, absolutely. And the other thing, a couple other things. Ray Hazlitt, I did talk to him a little bit about the EPA document, and he felt that it was just, you know, standard procedure because that facility came up on the questions over the last decade, but he felt confident that we will have our part of it mitigated well before 2020, and it's not an issue.
I certainly hope he's right. Just remember that as well.
What is this about, the EPA document?
Here, that's what, here.
We have to resolve...
That it relates to the restroom, or is this...
No, no, no. This has to do with litigation, you know, in the past.
We forget that you weren't here.
Okay, correct.
It was awful.
Okay.
And finally, I'm delighted that the discussion of the hazardous waste day is positive, and I might add to that, that there's been a lot of discussion since the letter to the editor concerning fluorescent bulbs and how we might include fluorescent bulbs in the pickup, and it looks to me like that's going to be, at least attempted to be resolved. It's a very challenging situation because they break so easily, but apparently OU has the facility to smash it in a sealed way and send it all away, mercury and all, but that is one of the things that we're working on as well.
Well, when you say "we," you mean the Solid Waste District or the city?
Um...
Or the university?
You mean who's looking at it?
No, no, I mean, are we going, because I, you know, I thought you and I and Paul met with Roger, and we had basically a plan of action. I just didn't know.
You mean, where's the fluorescent part coming from?
Yeah, where's, you know, like, we had a list of things we were going to collect and...
Right. This came from some comments from the EPA folks and from some local churches that are doing some projects concerning trying to find a solution to fluorescent bulb disposal. And so it's coming from outside of it. I just answered some of the concerns that we were looking at a hazardous waste day, and I believe that Donna Goodman spoke with Roger Bell concerning it, and that's how the connection came.
Okay, I just couldn't figure out what...
All the discussions, right. I know, it was kind of convoluted, but it was coming through me. I told her that Roger Bell was working on it, and I believe that she discussed it with him.
Yeah, and I am, I guess that the other thing I learned was that the university got its vessel.
Composting?
Composting, and I guess, from my point of view, there are a couple of questions, mainly about where it's going to be with reference to other developments and the heat associated with it and the stink associated with such a facility, and the transit of materials from the student center to this facility. And I guess that it does have bearing on plans in the future, say the connector road and other things like that, because my understanding from people that are familiar with these facilities is it's a large industrial facility, very hot and very smelly. So I, and I think that the money's there, and now somebody's going to have to make some decisions. I hope we have some input later on and...
It sounds like a good thing for the EEI zone.
Well, that's exactly the point. It certainly isn't an educational function, but we'll see how it sorts out.
Okay, just one thing, just for those watching and maybe me, what's in fluorescent bulbs?
Mercury.
Mercury, yes.
Okay, well, there, I'm done. We can go to finance and personnel. An hour, an hour and a half, you see?
I'm not going to let you sit there anymore.
No. I get the powwow wordiness going.
Oh, no.
Oh, no. All right, Jim, you're on.
Okay, finance and personnel. We're going to start with a visit from our auditor Cathy Hecht. Last year, at the end of the year, the auditor's office implemented some procedures that were recommended by the state auditor, which I think we all got copies of this letter from them, and there's been some misunderstanding among council members about exactly what happened last year and how we're going to deal with this in the future.
Before we start, could we say that there is no, I don't believe there's a misunderstanding. I believe that what happened is that we did not anticipate certain problems, and that's where the, where my issues came from. Not any criticism of Cathy, but more that if you take this action, then we're going to be making some really quick decision-making on a dime, and I guess I didn't like doing that a couple of times, and that's where... So it wasn't a criticism of our auditor, it was a criticism of the consequences of taking that action.
Right, and I think that...
So she doesn't have to feel defensive.
Which will lead us to take other actions at the end of this year. So, but I, I still believe that there's a misunderstanding about the concept of what's happening. Cathy?
All right, I guess I'll go ahead and explain it. Maybe Nancy understands it already, but I'd like to talk about our audit and the process, first of all, and what's happened. I've been in the auditor's office for three years and have gone through three audits. The first audit, of course, was for the year before I was in there. There are different issues that the auditors are in your management letter. One that's not in there are the material findings, which are considered the most serious. There's not been a material finding since I've been in office, and I doubt if there has been quite some time in that office. The other ones involve ORC noncompliance, which is what we're talking about, and then matters for improvement. The first year that we were audited, we had three ORC noncompliance issues and 14 matters for improvement. The second year when I was in there, which was the first year I was actually auditor that we were audited, we had three ORC noncompliance issues still, but only seven matters for improvement. Now, the last year, we have had two ORC noncompliance and only four matters for improvement. I think we've gone a long way to improve our audits and our operations in the auditor's office, and I just think that's important for you to know. As Jim said, I put a letter in everyone's box on Friday. This is the management letter that we get along with our audit every year. The first year I was in there, our auditors had what we call an exit conference when the audit was done, and we invited counsel, the mayor, the law director, and any department heads who were involved in the audit issues. Okay? Some of these issues are directly related to the process in my office, but some are not. Some involve, you know, other departments and changes they might need to do. I personally like that, then, that they can talk about, you know, what's going on. What they've done the last two years is taken, taken the individual issues on a single sheet of paper and talked to the people that were involved in that particular issue. So on the other hand, you know, nobody at the rec. department has to listen to other, you know, departments' issues that go on, but I think if we had that conference and counsel was invited, then they might have heard a little bit more about this process and what was going on. What we had this year that we didn't have last year is, number one, Ohio revised code noncompliance. The other thing to keep in mind is, you know, things change. The things they look at from year to year, the laws change, and so if you've read that first one, there are a couple steps involved in that, and I'm not sure everybody understands the step that our office does in regard to the budget commission, the county budget The appropriation ordinance is only part of what we do. The beginning of the year, just like we have a new, you pass a new budget for the city, my office has to file a certificate of resources, certified resources, with the budget commission, and that includes our carryover money and what we expect to bring in for the next year. What we do throughout the year looks very different. Anybody is welcome to get this, and we do this whenever we need it, quite regularly. Throughout the year, we get amended certificates. Part of that process is the appropriations. We usually amend our certificate of resources based on an ordinance that changes the expected revenue. If we get a new grant, if we see when we got the parking tickets and we, you know, contracted with the company for collection and the money increased our revenue, then we send that information to the county budget commission through the county auditor's office, and they amend our certificate. So what this issue on our audit says is that we need to do both of those things. We need to amend our certificate, which involves the appropriations going up or going down. What this also says is that the problem in the beginning of the year, if you have $100 appropriated in a fund because you expect to have that much revenue, but you only bring in 90, you might only spend $80 of that, so you've done nothing illegal, which has always been the case. We've never spent money we did not have or we're not allowed to spend, but the fact that the appropriation is there on the books makes them think that there is that opportunity, which is what it says, that, you know, that there is that opportunity for that money to be spent even though it's not there, because there is an appropriation higher than what was brought in. So at the end of the year, this was our first time to do this, we went through and reduced appropriations, and this is the same thing we run into with our budget. We have to prepare this in November before the end of the year, and there's actually a fair amount of action in December that, you know, changes, and same with our budget. You know, every January, we have to amend that budget that we passed. You know, we know within weeks that it needs amendments. So we reduced the appropriations for funds whose revenue did not come in at quite the extent that we thought it would at the beginning of the year. You know, the appropriations in the budget is all, you know, you know, educated guesses. It's not guesses, but it's, you know, they're estimates of what we think might happen, and lots of things do happen throughout the year to increase or decrease those revenues. So we went through and reduced the revenues or the appropriations to match the revenues in these funds. We didn't really zero out a lot of funds. We might have reduced them, but the only one, there might be one in there that was a grant fund that we didn't get, and that one would have been a zero, but most of them were just reduced by an amount of revenue that we did not get, so that the opportunity was not there to spend money that we did not have in that fund. You know, that's what we did. You know, that's what we did as per the auditor's management letter and Ohio Revised Code. I think, I don't, I don't know really what council's issues are with that. You know, I'm doing what I, you know, should be doing in my office, is, you know, complying with our auditor's issues. The problem, I think, but you can correct me, is I am doing this at the same time you are trying to pass a budget. And we're trying to put this money together, and we have money that we're planning on. A perfect example of what happened are the Columbus Road projects, and money was appropriated. We knew we could get money from FEMA. None of that money came in by the end of last year. I really had to reduce those funds by that money, even though, and projects weren't started either. We didn't spend that money, but to have the appropriation on the books is, you know, in violation of this Revised Code. So, at the same time, I'm reducing these appropriations, and the mayor and council are trying to get, you know, the budget together. I don't think all of the money was reappropriated. That's certainly something that we can work on next year. This is the first time we've done this. I don't see a lot of problems. There've been a few like that. I think most of them, there haven't been a lot of them. I think, I don't know, I was on council once myself, and, and there are constant appropriations throughout the year. And there have been since I've been in the audience, in the Auditor's Office. And I mean, that's not going to change. You know, we can try, try to be more careful, but appropriations are going to have to be made, increasing and decreasing throughout the years. And our amended certificates are going to be, have to be taken care of, you know.
All right. And I, oh, okay. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I mean, I think this was the first time we went through this particular process. And for me, what was the, you know, the moment of like, what's going on here was when we had an appropriation that was in excess of $1 million that we hadn't heard about previously that we needed to suspend the rules on and approve right away. So, you know, hopefully, as we go through this again, you know, we'll have taken all of that into consideration. You know, we knew that was a project that needed to be paid for. I think that it was just seeing it come up and, you know, make a decision like that is a little bit startling. It's not a normal, or, I mean, I understand the process and the reason that that happened, but it isn't the traditional way that we would consider
Well, I understand what you're saying too, but I also sit here and watch council, you know, go back and forth and back and forth over $4,000 appropriations, and I see them suspend and, and pass on, you know, half a million dollar appropriations without batting an eye. It, it's all the context of what the money is for and where it's coming from. So I, I understand a million dollars, you know, makes you look at it, but in the big picture, I think we all knew what that was. That we, we've known since last year that those Columbus Road water sewer projects were going to be over a million dollars. And, you know.
With the auditor, and I had spoken of was, as she's preparing this ordinance that, that reduces appropriations that had not brought in the money yet, the next step would be simply to do the, the second paragraph of the ordinance, which reappropriates those as of January 1st, especially those continuing, continuing funds, those that are funding continuing projects. And those are the ones that caught all of our attention when, in March, we suddenly realized that we had
Absolutely. When things, the bills started coming in, the projects got started, and absolutely it caused issues with the ordinance.
So, but we can make it a part of the automatic end-of-year process, to jumpstart
Under suspension the last day?
To jumpstart them in as of January 1st. Paul?
Well, I think we did suspend it last time. I mean, I, I went back and looked at my stuff. It's 14506. Unfortunately, I have my staple 145, and I see, it says amended. And of course, amended one didn't get stapled to it. I recall it was like twice the length of the first part of this. The other thing is that we've, that's the zeroing out part we're talking about in 14506, I think.
Yeah, I know you keep referring it to that, but we didn't zero out funds.
No.
What we did was reduce
You deappropriated the stuff.
The other thing is, you know, this zero out the funds is really not accurate. And I know it's an easy way to say it, and if you're comfortable with that. But we did not take any money out of funds.
No.
We reduced appropriations in those funds. Whatever money was there is still there. Whatever money wasn't there is still there. What we said was, you know, the city cannot spend money, more than this money, amount of money out of this fund.
Okay. So, in the past two regular sessions, we've had two $1.6 million suspended rules on for appropriations, and we've had no committee meetings on it. That's my concern. The first one was a million, and the second one is the $600,000. We had to move around to various funds. And that, I guess that's why I'm, I'm wondering how, you know, with, if I remember looking at the budgets, what, 30 million or something like that, or 29 on the unamended version I'm looking at right now? So we're talking about somehow we skipped a little bit on that.
That's not my decision.
Okay.
Suspension or not, it's not my decision. I can ask you, that's up to you guys, but, you know, that's not my decision.
Here it's ours. Look, somebody requested.
Yeah. It's got to be done, is what it usually says. I mean, you've got to do this.
Well, yeah, you can look at it that way or not. You know, I mean, that's, if you don't suspend, you know, the bills sit there. That's not, and, and from my standpoint, and I know it's different from your standpoint, I've been up there, this is business as usual. You know, most of these bills, we know, we've done the projects, we know the work is being done, pay the bills. But if you want to wait, you know, it's, you know, that's your decision.
But in this case, I mean, of that $600,000 coming in from FEMA, we received $306,000 this week. We were able to move it in, and now we can start paying the bills with the FEMA money instead of our own. That was the reason we asked for the suspension, because we anticipated it to be here.
And that was, that, that ordinance was suspended last time to go ahead and spend that, once the request for the early money to come in. You know, we've been talking about, about FEMA money in those projects since last year. You know, that's, it's not like, ooh, all of a sudden we got this project and we need all this, a million dollars to, you know, we just found out yesterday, you know, these projects have been there. So the money was reduced, you had to reappropriate, we didn't do it sooner, you know, we should have, you know.
So what I'm hearing from Jim is that the next set of ordinances for this deappropriation will include, actually, reappropriating at January 1st?
Well
Where appropriate, where it's project-based.
Yeah.
In those cases, we'd already had authority and appropriation. We'd already entered into contracts with the city. So we know that grant funds will come and those expenses will occur. In those cases, we would, but in others, if we're in the situation where we don't anticipate to spend that money, we think adequately is, is already budgeted for the next year, we wouldn't.
If it were something like the painting program, the enhancement fund that we appropriated, what, we, $27,000 through, at the end of the year
It's not spent.
Yeah, they were just
Go back to the fund. Well, that makes sense. So in other words, what you're saying is you're going to come up with a provision for continuing projects?
Yes.
And that's all we can ask?
And we won't be caught in March when
Looking stupid, yes.
We need to pay a contractor that, that the fund doesn't exist by now.
Yes. And we've all been talking about it for two years.
Debbie? I'm sorry.
Well, there's a lot of people involved here, and that's why it slipped through the cracks. You know, the department heads, the mayor, you know, council, me, you know, it's, it's not up to me to make all these decisions or follow when, you know, I don't know always exactly when the project was started, what portion was, you know, finished, or when the bills started coming in until they come to my office. But they go somewhere else first. So, you know, it's going to, it's going to happen. We, you know, we do our best to avoid it.
We think we're going to do that.
Sounds like, that sounds like That's a good plan to deal with it. I mean, I think, in a way, the law is counterintuitive. If we've entered into contracts and have projects that are underway, to have to go through these steps is a little silly.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we didn't love it.
I understand the rationale behind it, but
I have, I mean, I have the ordinance in front of me too, Paul. And that was a lot of time examining all these funds and trying to see, you know, Mary Hogan, the deputy auditor is here, who did, you know, that work. It's hours of going through the funds. Okay, do we still have some revenue coming in? How much can we reduce it? You know, we didn't just go through and say, oh, this is how much they've spent, you know, by November 20th, so let's bring it down to that. We had to anticipate what they would need to spend through December and only reduce it that far. It, it was a lot of work. No, we didn't love doing this.
My comment just has to do with the other side of the coin as well, is we have contractors that do need to be paid and, and do need to like doing business with the city. And so to artificially hold that up through our process when we knew that we were going to be expending the money, I, I think that we need not worry about that excessively. If we can figure out a better system and make it happen less often, wonderful. But if we occasionally have to suspend in order to keep the goodwill of our contractors, I think that's important.
Thank you, Carol. I agree with that, too. You know, my bottom line is, you know, pay the bills, is the same way I'm raising my uncle's.
I don't think anybody disagrees with any of that.
Okay. So I, we kind of understand where we were and where we hope we're going to be.
Well, I'm not sure. But we'll, we'll look forward to what you come up with.
Okay, thank you. Cathy, anything else you want to add?
I think that's it for that.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
We had a question at the last council meeting about some contracts we have with regards to providing bus service through the Lakefront Transportation System from Athens to Cleveland and possibly beyond. Now, I guess Columbus and Cleveland is the determinants of this particular service. I've given you copies of a couple of different grant budgets. I'm not going to go over them. This one, the Ohio Department of Transportation, that has some highlighting on the front, is, is telling us that the Ohio Department of Transportation is forwarding to the City of Athens some funds which include $105,000 in federal funds for intercity service operations and approximately $35,000 in federal funds for intercity administration. And that particular packet shows you the breakdown of what the city gets for administering this contract. If you'll remember, we've entered into this contract for the last four years, I believe, because we believe that it's a good thing to offer bus service from Athens, and hopefully to Athens in some cases, but to the, to the larger cities to our north. And without this additional federal funding, that wouldn't be able to happen. Until November, the university administered this contract. And when the university closed the oasis, they went out of this business. The city stepped in in November and took it over. And as of January 1st, we are now the titled administrator. So we are eligible to receive approximately $35,000, $34,945 for the administration of this grant. And if you look at the breakdown, it shows that $13,000 and something is for wages, $5,000 for benefits that go with the wages, $18,000 for, for general facilities. The bus system is basically renting the community center. And then also, they're paying some rent for parking and staging for the bus to park. So that shows where, how that money is broken down. In this one, it says budget 2007, it's, it's similar breakdown for the money that Lakefront gets for running this operation. You'll see that it still doesn't cover all of Lakefront's expenses. I'm assuming they get maybe some other grants that, that don't flow through us, but it does show how that money is utilized by Lakefront. And finally, there are a couple pages that are just examples of payments received through this grant. The first one shows the total that was received in 2006, when the grant was only $101,570. If you'll notice, that grant was actually paid out at the end of the third quarter. And historically, that's what's happened, is, is Lakefront bills and the grant pays it out by the end of the third quarter. So we, at this point, only have our activity for the first quarter where the, the grant has paid through January, February, and March, $26,000 to Lakefront. And it doesn't, doesn't show any money that paid to us yet. So, this is a breakdown of how the money is allocated for the two entities that are receiving, the city and the bus system. Does that kind of answer the questions that you had? And if not, please take a little bit of time this week, look at this, come up with questions, and we'll talk about it at second reading.
Okay.
Did the mayor have anything to add to that? I know the mayor has a couple miscellaneous issues.
I just wanted to, in your council inboxes was the quarterly analysis report for revenue, general fund, selected admin, or other funds. Just wanted you to be aware it's there, so if you take a look at it and have some questions, just give me, give me a call. I think the main, one thing to note is that comparing this to other years, we've had seven pay periods instead of normal six through, through March 31st. So the personnel lines are all higher than the last year, not from the regular, you know, 2% or 3% inflationary factor, but from an additional payroll. But it's still within the 25%, which would be the guideline for the first quarter of the year.
Paul?
Is that a negative number I'm seeing on the difference between '06 and '07? First page, revenue, general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Another miscellaneous, we have a copy of an email from Nick Carr, the Director of Water and Sewer. There's a problem with a, a water line pump on Richland Avenue, which I assume is near University Courtyard, that pumping station they put in there?
It's the pump station at Peet that pumps everything from the entire south side to, there's a dual pump. Only one is working right now. We don't have a backup. And if it fails, we can't pump any sewers from the whole south side of town.
And that's a sewer.
So we want a backup. The backup broke, and so we need to replace it. It's about, what, $13,000 or $14,000?
$13,000.
Shouldn't this go through the environmental committee?
I'm sorry?
Shouldn't this go through the
Well, I think it's finance.
Oh, it's in the past.
It's finance because they've already ordered this pump and
Well, it's an existing pump, we're just replacing it without adding it.
They've ordered the replacement, and they've already moved funds around to pay for that. They'd like us to reimburse the sewer fund for that amount. And we may ask to suspend because they probably need that fairly quickly.
Debbie has a deal for you, then.
Okay. Paul?
Is this capital that comes out of, or where are we taking the money from? Sewer fund itself?
It's water, isn't it?
Water?
You said water.
Yeah, the capital, the sewer maintenance.
Yeah. Okay.
He said, he said water.
Excuse me? Well, no, he said water, he said sewer.
Oh.
I, I said water, first of all, because it's, it's not clear here, and I made a guess, and I guessed.
Sure. It's like
So, yeah, well, yeah, there's a difference. Okay. And also, in our, in our mailboxes, I want to point out that we did receive an unappropriated balances report as of March 31st from the Auditor's Office.
That's right.
So that's something else for you to look at this week. That's personnel and finance, unless there's any questions. Okay, we're done. Thank you. Thank you.
We're going to have a planning and development committee meeting, which I think should be fairly brief. I ended up having some questions for our consultants about site plan review and have more work to do on that, so I removed it from the agenda, and we just have miscellaneous items.
Who were the consultants that were?
I was going to go back and talk to Pogomire with a question about the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is she going to do the adult book study?
So, I have several miscellaneous items. One of them refers to blasting within the city limits.
Food?
Blasting, blowing things up. And we need to.
Is this another Civil War reenactment?
No. We need to amend the city code fairly rapidly.
Yeah, we set that up because we'd had a request from one of the contractors to do blasting, and we found a section in there that permits it, and we don't really want to do it.
Right.
And I don't think.
Someone has requested a blasting permit, and right now, our code has a process by which they can get one from the mayor. The proposal is to amend 9.03.07 so that it only says, "No person shall cause a blast to occur within the city," period. And it'll take out any reference to a permit. Anybody have a problem with that?
No. But do we define blast?
Yeah. Is there a definition of blast in the code? Do we know?
I don't believe so.
Would there be one in Ohio Revised Code that would be the default?
Yeah.
Is that like using dynamite?
Yes.
Yeah. I would think.
So, plastic. Before we read it, we'll check and see whether there's a definition in Ohio law that would be the default, and whether we need to also add a definition of blasting.
So has this application or permit already been made? Are we?
No, it was an inquiry based upon doing, making a bid.
Okay.
And so we just told them, no, they couldn't allow, well, I wasn't allowed to do that in town.
Okay.
Because I know the problems we had with where the Super 33 went through, it was outside of the city, but it was still causing city residents concern.
No, that's good.
With the sliprun soils that we have here, I think it's just begging for trouble.
Yes.
Yes. And so one of the miscellaneous items is Nancy asked me to request a special session next week on Monday at 7:30 to read the resolution for Columbus Road annexation, the resolution regarding Senate Bill 117, and the blasting permit change.
She's hiding.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry.
So can everyone attend on Monday at 7:30?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
My line was, "Lack of planning on your part does not constitute an emergency on mine." That was my line at 7 o'clock. You see how well you've.
You ripped it off.
And we'll be requesting suspension on the Columbus Road annexation because of the 20 days. And maybe the state needs to be informed that that is not a reasonable time.
20 days.
Yeah.
And this is probably a good place to ask this question. What's the difference between an annexation request and a, what are we calling this one?
Type 2.
Type 2. How do I get to choose?
Whichever one is.
Can I just choose one?
If you want to annex something, I guess it's whatever you file, what kind of request you file.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll have a special session. I have another miscellaneous, I've got yours, Bojinka. The McDade rezoning request out on East State Street. I plan to have that up for first reading in our next meeting. We had the public hearing. Is everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Moving ahead.
We could have it as a special session.
Okay. On the B2D rezoning issue, that has, I've heard recent questions about that again. The Planning Commission discussed this, and I'm waiting for either their minutes or a memo about their further instructions for us before we have a discussion. And then Bojinka has a request that we talk about, what is the name of this place? Passionate Kisses.
Yeah, I got a telephone call and a subsequent email from a citizen who noticed that at the bottom of Pomeroy Road.
Commonly called the Y.
Yeah. And some kind of an adult establishment called Passionate Kisses has been, I guess was opening any day now, or has opened. And she has young children, and she actually called the code office to see if there was anything in city code which would disallow that kind of an establishment being in such a, I want to say, a well-traveled place where kids come back and forth from school, et cetera, et cetera. And I guess Steve Pearson said there was no, there was nothing in city code that would disallow, you know, adult kind of entertainment places in the city. So, anyway, you know, I think she has a legitimate kind of complaint, and it may be something that we want to look into. I'm sure other cities have some codes that, in terms of, you know, what something is zoned, what allowable types of businesses are allowed. So I guess.
I would suggest you do some legal research on it, because there's various case law about the right to do it in the zone. And most of the legislation that I think has been upheld is proximity to, you know, schools and other things, but there's been a lot of it in other areas, and so you need to find one that stood the test in court would be the best thing. And might want to contact the municipal league to see what they have with regard to that.
So is that really, I mean, there's nothing much we can do about it?
But I don't know what the business is, so I don't.
You don't know what?
I have not seen anything on it.
Oh.
So, for all I know, it's a candy shop.
Well, not from what she's said.
Well, but I don't know where she's.
It is attached to a gas station, so, you know, there's a lot of traffic there. What?
Is that how convenient?
Yeah.
Carol?
Yeah.
Well, is the objection primarily the title and the signage?
That's a good point.
That sort of thing? Because, I mean, we do know that we've had materials available in town in various places, but they're not advertised outside or anything like that.
Right, yeah, she did mention the, you know, the window displays.
Right.
And the name of it, obviously, is something.
The clerk just told me that the Law Director's Office is reviewing this.
Okay.
So we should be able to get some advice about what our options are.
Okay. And just to remember that, because Carol, I think, brings up an interesting point about signage and window displays. You know, is there anything in our signage ordinance that kind of, you know, talks about appropriate public signage, for whatever reason? Other than visual, other than size or.
Kind of like sensors that we might want to.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, there is, or no, there isn't?
I will check.
Okay.
Nancy raises a point that that's what some issues is, we'll say.
I don't know, victimless crimes, I guess.
Well, it's something to explore. Okay, thank you.
So, Carrie's looking more. I guess we'd like to find out more. I think Paul has a miscellaneous item.
Oh.
You just stuck this in front of me.
Yeah, I did. I just got it today to myself. This is concerning our Cool Cities Resolution, paying for the membership for the, applying to the ICLAI. This is to get the benchmark stuff. It's about $600. I see I got it from Rick saying how to deal with this. I imagine we just apply a city council, is that a?
Well, I wasn't concerned too much about the money, Paul. I mean, because the commitment's already been made. It's just, in its quest, there's a two-page application you have to fill out. And in that, it indicated, you know, do you want, like yourself as environmental chair, do you want to be one of those contact people? You know, to what degree does city council want to serve in some of those? And then what administration we do, I thought was more of the monetary.
Okay.
Because somebody will have to champion, as we start to have to spend money to do these things.
Okay. Probably I should get together with you sometime and talk about this, because it would be probably cover both administration and council, those administrations.
Yeah, I think it'd be a joint. I just think it should be joined. Probably the environmental chair would be the appropriate person to do that. That's why I sent it up.
Okay.
But, you know, we may want to look and see, okay, we, and I wanted to have a meeting, Ray and I talked about it today, with the various key department heads that have the most amount of things that they've indicated they want to be able to do. And still, because my point's always been, it's nice to sign up and do that, but you need to have a plan of action and some degree of benchmarks. And I think that's what Ben Appleby has said to us before, too, is we have to round the way to judge and value what we have been able to accomplish that one.
Okay, so you were, last time we spoke about this, you were getting feedback from your various departments?
Right, I've got that.
Okay. And who do you think are the major players in which departments?
Well, it would be streets, because of all of the public lighting that's there, the traffic signals and such. Water and Sewer are the highest consumers of energy with the plants and everything. And then, to a certain extent, we should involve lands and buildings, because it's the overall caretaker of everything. But probably, you know, those are the first ones to take a look at, probably.
Okay. Sometime, maybe, we should get together on this, this week or next week?
Either one.
Okay. I'll be there.
Carol? Just kind of segueing from that, at the same time, the folks that have been working with the Wellhead Protection Education have an application in hand to become a groundwater guardian community, cheerleaders for clean water. And we fulfill all the requirements, and they will be discussing the application next week and forwarding that. So this will time with the Cool Cities initiatives as well.
I was going to say, we'll be a cool, groundwater guardian, inclusive.
Diverse.
This is very good. Actually, I know that program. It's out of Nebraska. It's really, really a good one.
Excellent. Well, everything I've read and seen about it, it seems to be.
And I saw in the newspaper, there's this workshop for the businesses, right?
That is correct.
There'll be another one for residents.
Right. Later, there will be one for residents, and that's one of the requirements of this program, that you show that you're doing these things, and then you turn in a report after you've done it, and you renew every year as you continue your educational programming or other types of programming.
All right, well, I think, you know, all I had on my agenda was miscellaneous, but there were quite a few of them.
Wasn't an hour, though.
We're adjourned. All right. Best relax, obviously.
Twenty-eight, good luck.
Great.
That's what she holds us to.
Okay, first on the agenda is the street tour. I just wanted to briefly go through some of the high points from the street tour. As we know, each year, the Director of the Streets Department, Andy Stone, gives us a proposal on the rehab and maintenance plan for the streets. We went through, we toured some of the key areas, and some of the problematic areas that we'll be working on this summer. The way the Street Department rates the necessity on some of these streets is using the ODOT Design Rating System, which is from 0 to 100. It's the pavement condition ratings, and what they do is they go through and they find out the type of street, the severity and extent of the distress on the streets, just to kind of give you an idea of how they regulate and do the repaving. Some of the key areas that have been designated for this year include West Union Street, East State Street, Hoover Street, Curtis Street, Longview Heights Road, Cable Lane, Dairy Lane, Richland Avenue, Fremont, Verona, North Lancaster, and North Court. And there are some other ones that we had identified during our street tour that Andy is going to be incorporating into the overall plan, and hopefully I'll have that maybe by our special session that I can just brief you on next Monday, if not two weeks from now. The budget as the recommended funding, excuse me, that Andy proposed was $453,000. $375,000 is for paving and rehab, and $15,000 for crack seal, another $18,000 for the in-house paving that we do, some Brick Street rehab, and then, of course, a contingency that goes along with those projects. Do we have any questions or want to point out? Nancy?
I think you did a fabulous job, Debbie. Except your name is Amy. I think you did a fabulous, yes. I am worn out. Yeah. I think you did a fabulous job, and what I would like to do is sometime look at the brick ordinance when we're not, it's not 10 o'clock at night.
Right.
Yeah, because I think it's okay for this year, but I'd like to find some money out.
In terms of, yes. Would you talk about that more? Would several of us agree with that? Sure. Paul?
I have to read what Nancy said. The other thing is, I'd like to see a bigger chunk of this going to the sidewalks, if possible.
Right.
At this point, we're talking about $453,000, but I don't, you know, I'd like to get something big so I can start, what was it, assessing people for sidewalk repair or having them do sidewalk repair. I know we need a chunk of money to do that if they have to repair them.
Right, I know that we identified some of the problematic areas, so maybe we can start with those in terms of after, maybe after we see how Stewart Street goes, I mean, we can start talking about them.
Well, Stewart Street is actually a total building up. The other one is actually, code goes down the street and fixes sidewalks.
Sure, repair. Right, but there are some areas that do need.
Oh, yes.
New construction. So, Debbie, did you?
Bricks.
Bricks, right. Carol?
I don't, I have my report in front of me, and I'm not sure it's in or anywhere, but one of the ones that we discussed for rehab was May Avenue. Is that correct?
So that wasn't, that was one of the ones, I think, for alternate bid.
Was added on.
Yes.
I have had more comments about May Avenue from folks on that entire end of town than anyplace else. And I keep telling them, it's going to happen, it's going to happen, so please, don't let me down.
Okay. Anything else on the street tour?
Yeah.
Bojinka, I'll be sure to get you a copy of the report, too. And I'm also going to make a copy later on the back table, so anybody who's interested in seeing the street tour report, if you weren't there with us on Sunday. Next on our agenda is a fairly brief item, the handicap parking. I know we've discussed extending the meter time to three hours. However, since then, communication from Captain Pyle has suggested that we move to four hours instead of three hours, because it only makes sense for the routes for the meter maids, and it would, as he put it, be virtually impossible to enforce the three-hour limit.
Okay.
I just want to know if council is comfortable with doing the four hour?
Yeah, I think so.
Everybody's okay with that, then?
They don't like to be called meter maids, the parking enforcement.
Parking enforcement, excuse me.
But if that was.
Nancy, I think you're going to get.
Hey.
One of the first communications I saw, copy of, was that if we changed it to three hours, we'd have to put all the meters in for those. Will the four hours allow us to use the current meter heads?
We'll have to change the mechanisms inside per program.
So they still need to be programmed?
Yeah.
But what it does do is gets the cycle of the enforcement to the mash.
Parking enforcement.
Nancy?
Didn't stay out long enough.
Nancy?
Didn't stay out long enough. Should've stayed some more.
We just mentioned.
Took the restroom on the first floor instead of this floor.
We mentioned doing the four hours instead of three hours on the meters for the handicap parking, because it, as Captain Pyle put it, virtually impossible to, for the parking enforcement, to enforce three hours. So I just want to, because I want to put it for first reading, so, okay, I want to put it for first reading, then.
I was going to say, as long as there are enough spaces, right? I mean, this won't, I want to say handicap, handicap people not to be able to find a space, will it?
We don't know.
We do it in this world.
I know, we didn't really do the study of that.
And the Disabilities Commission did request this, four hours.
Yeah, they discussed.
They understood longer than three.
I sat down, yes, I sat down with the.
I understood that, yeah.
And talked to them about, you know, how to accommodate.
Right, okay.
This was one of their suggestions. Next on the agenda, the next two items kind of work together, the 24-hour parking and the parking hang tags. I'm going to have Carol help me out a little bit on the parking hang tag issue, because she was around when they first started discussing.
Not when I.
All right, well, then we discussed it.
Decades and decades.
When we discussed it before I came to council, with Sarah Sexton.
Just the most recent times.
Basically, what we're dealing with is an issue of not having enough parking spaces for the number of bedrooms that are in these houses. And, you know, since they are grandfathered in, then they don't have to provide the parking. And it kind of falls on the shoulder of the city in terms of, you know, we're the ones that hear the complaints about enforcing this 24-hour parking, you know, to combat the storage parking issue, that, why the 24-hour parking was initially stated. So I guess just kind of need to know from council, I mean, we need to really move on this and figure out some sort of solution. I don't know if parking hang tags is the solution, if we start in select streets, or what we do in terms of helping to accommodate the parking issue, at the same time combating the storage parking issue.
Carol? A couple comments about this in talking to various people about it and talking with Ray Hazlitt. Ray Hazlitt, including today, about possible ways to do this, to begin taking a look at the effect of the move your car every 24 hours as opposed to the intention. One of the ideas that we came up with was the possibility of designating some streets as a lesser impact and doing an ordinance to have an experimental program on streets such as Central Avenue, Morris, Elmwood, where it is not the level of the problem that we have on Brown Avenue, Grosvenor, Franklin, to see what happens, see, and possibly even put a sunset on this, that it be a limited program to see how it would work on a hang tag basis, on an annual selling of these hand tags, hang tags, for probably a rate of about $25 a year. And this would give, and I, that's what I'm hearing from people that would like to see this happen. They say 25 is very reasonable, that they would purchase the hang tag and then they would not have to move that vehicle every 24 hours. Are there problems? Of course. Are there questions? Huge ones. But this is one of the levels that we could kind of enter into this. And I think what we should do before we, like, write an actual ordinance is have a little bit more input from parking enforcement and from the mayor in terms of what might be the problems and what are their recommendations. Always, when we first start talking about these things, it sounds really good, and then as you get into it, it's like, well, what if, what if, what if? But it seems to me that by designating some lower-impact streets and doing it on a temporary experimental basis, it might show us how this could work to improve the situation and save fuel by not having people constantly moving their cars. Paul?
We discussed this earlier today. In '94, '95, when this started, it started on Congress with an experiment on Congress.
Right.
And immediately, the adjacent streets wanted to buy into this test or this system. I can see where we might be petitioned real quick.
Absolutely.
Okay. The next thing, when you say a test system and it's $25 a year, are we talking about a test for one year or?
We can decide that. The price yet, the price shouldn't be set till we know what we're, I mean, that's ridiculous.
No, no, no.
That was just a fore-sayably could be.
I'd say several hundred dollars.
But really, what I'm trying to cover here is, okay, when you say a test system, are we talking testing for one school year, one quarter?
We could decide that.
Yeah, I think that's- Well, I mean, we really aren't gonna be doing it next week. We're not even gonna be doing it until fall quarter, right?
Probably.
Probably. But we still have to start talking about it now.
Well, we talked about it last time and you, and we ended up saying, well, I guess we won't be doing this because the people that came said the old way was working fine. And it was a conversation at council that I attended downstairs. Now it's back again. I mean, it's gonna be-
Well, the old way obviously is not working fine.
And I certainly am hearing a lot of people very concerned about it.
Well, I know, but we haven't finished talking ourselves yet halfway through. Bojenka?
Is it possible, and this is a, I don't know the answer to this, rather than have people, you know, park there for like, three months, is it possible to reinforce it so that there's a limit, like, a three-week limit? And then you have to move.
No, no, no. If you live in that neighborhood.
I'm just asking if it is possible.
It would be possible.
Everything is possible. I mean, just five other people go along with you.
Well, I don't know, that's the question. But I was gonna say, other, I mean, the problem is like, storage parking, right? But there are people, I know, but there are people, and they've talked to me, they have young children or something, and they want to be able to, you know, they can't move their car every 24 hours, plus, it's kind of silly. Maybe they want to leave it there for a few days. But we want to combat, you know, people leaving cars for like, weeks and months, right? So my question is, is it possible to enforce something that even though you have a hang tag, you know, you can't have it in exactly the same spot for some, some amount of time, be it days or weeks? It's a question.
Well, I'd like to add the question that maybe before we designate streets, we ought to ask people that live on them if they're interested in this procedure.
Right.
I mean, because I know Morris Avenue, I've heard many, many complaints from people about the outsiders parking, but yet, I think that there are many, you know, convenience sake, people park in front of their houses. And, you know, pretty soon, you won't have enough spots if they don't have to ever move it. Be much more convenient than stack parking. And so I'd like, you know, since both of these are, well, they're-
Debbie and I were, right? And Paul's, too.
So.
It's easy for us to think about how it might work, but, you know.
Okay, I, you know, if somebody has a car, eventually they're gonna use it. So in terms of storage, they may be moving it once every week, two weeks. You know, I, I-
Let's hope.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
The other thing is that we do have tax systems because we have taxes for the parking garage.
Right, we do.
So that's something we can actually expand and use, or are we talking about having to, you know, acquire a whole new system, I guess?
It's somewhat of a new system. What Ray Hazlitt was talking about was color-coded for a year. So this is the yellow year, and then is the blue year, and so on. And that the street have a number, like, this is street number 24. So you have a hang tag that says 24 and it's blue, it means you can perk on the street and not move it every 24 hours. I mean, I'm talking about just conceptual ideas off the top of his head in kind of a brainstorming situation. It would not require more work on the part of the parking enforcement officers. It would have somewhat of a revenue stream, but we're primarily trying to solve the problem of just what Bojenka said, that the woman with the baby who can't run out and move the car all the time, and, you know, so what if the car stays there while in front of or nearby their own house? This is something that would be administered to the property owners, not just any old body that lived there.
I think the other problem would be property owners where they don't have any off-street parking, their family has two cars and they travel for Christmas break or for a couple of weeks in the summer. So I, I like the idea of trying something like this out. I would like the streets that we pilot it to be based on, you know, some criteria and a recommendation from, you know, the Street Department or Service Safety Director because of the lobbying that's gonna happen. I think what we're gonna need to have is a reason that particular streets were chosen to pilot this, and just a clear statement of the length of time for the pilot and how we're gonna evaluate whether it was a good idea or not at the end.
I did ask Ray Hazlitt to give some consideration to that, what his street recommendations would be.
How about the people that live there, though? I mean, they're the ones that are gonna have to put up with it, for goodness sake.
That's what we're trying to-
No, no, I mean, they don't know they're gonna benefit. I just think that it's really kind of, it's a big change, and before we start talking about it in such detail as yellow, red, and blue, we ought to really ask them if this would be something they think will work. And doing Morris Avenue is not gonna tell us much about Congress Street by the same token. I mean, Congress Street has a problem. We have a problem because the zoning board grants variances with, to go around the parking requirement. We have a problem because there are grandfathered areas, but we continue to perpetuate no parking with conversions. And I, and it's, it's a problem. And the problem is there, and it's not gonna be solved by hang tags.
That's a different problem.
Well, I know, so it really isn't, and to some extent, we don't even enforce or we don't have to do parking enforcement on some of these streets. We could just let the, well, no.
Well, I know we don't.
We would select streets where there is current enforcement.
But it won't tell us anything about the bigger, it'll solve the suburbanite quote-quote parking problem, but it won't solve the parking problem in Athens.
Well, if we can solve one problem by doing it, it seems to me-
Well, it's some people's problem, but we still own the streets, remember that.
We have a cranky- Comment from Lottie.
I am gonna go home.
You go home.
I'm gonna do Amy's, I'm gonna leave. But I mean, it seems like it's-
Chris Nysley, 15-year-old coach rode Athens, Ohio. And I'd like to thank Amy, she came to the executive committee's meeting this past Friday and talked with the neighborhood and community associations, and hopefully, I can correctly represent that I think opinion amongst the neighborhood associations, just from comments they have from the different citizens, is a little bit mixed at this point. Some people are saying, well, you might look at a part, hang tag parking, but let's look at some other cities. Stanton, Virginia, Cambridge, Massachusetts, were two cities that are mentioned that we could probably, you know, it might be a possibility to call those people, talk about how they implemented the program, what works, what doesn't. Some people on the executive committees felt like it's what it's doing by putting parking tags on the street is extending the garages to the streets. So opinion is mixed. As I understand from Amy, a lot of the complaints that have come in have been from students. I might say that just doing a little looking at comparable cities, because I knew Amy was also gonna bring up bicycle safety, I looked at Miami University and was looking at their parking. And they do say that the university discourages students from bringing cars to Oxford. The university and the city of Oxford are compact and interdependent, with most locations accessible to pedestrians. Which brings me to my last point that the executive committees did comment, is that what we think is, is that if we're gonna consider something like the 24-hour parking, any changes in that or the hang tags, that it be done as part of a comprehensive transportation plan and to look at it, you know, how are we also moving forward with remote parking and working to coordinate that with the university since their long-term master plan calls for remote parking garages? So I think, you know, just, those are my comments from the associations.
Thank you.
Amy, I just wanted to point out that council recently voted to suspend the 24-hour parking rule during certain times of the year. Christmas break, I think we're gonna do it again for spring break.
No.
Spring break happened.
Everything got shut down. We just did it that one time?
Spring break happened.
Okay, do we have feedback from them?
The people that I asked, including a couple that I had calls for when it was going through legislation, when I talked to them after, they said it was not any problem at all. And the fact of the matter is that was in that same Morris Avenue, those areas where they were very feeling, very nervous about it, but were fine with the result.
If you remember, I put that in front, whenever school was out, and the question arises is, are we talking about winter break, spring break, or and what does summer, the summer quarters represent? Because, you know, there are students here, but is that part of the mix? If I remember, the mayor said that they, we'd have the patrol officer, what is it, parking enforcement officer, doing nothing for three months of the year, and that would be a problem as well. So, you know, I, I was, I think it would be a good idea to do that during off-times, but again, not every place gets patrolled. The hang tag thing will, okay, what Nancy talked about as a citizen's on the street, I mean, suppose you really don't want to buy one of these things. Now you have to stare at a car that's in front of your house for the tag on it forever, and it's like preemptively, you're gonna have to buy one yourself just to be able to take that spot again.
Just have your car in front of your house.
Well, yeah.
People like that.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I, again, the idea of having less intense areas that have lesser parking is one way to ease into it. I would probably want, I know I, sometimes, last year, I did a count on my neighborhood in terms of off-street parking versus on, optimizing those numbers, but that, to me, is really what gets reflected, is how much off-street parking there is in each residence. I mean, somehow, you know.
We do have those figures. It's about like this, about we've got it.
Yeah, because I know, some places I thought had very little off-street parking, had more than I expected. Brown, for instance, has more than I would, you know, you look at it and say, there's no off-street parking. There is off-street parking, there's just lots of cars. Hanlon's got a different matter, and, you know, Franklin as well, as we know from the mayor's. So, you know, if you're gonna try it, I think we want to look at it more than just one street at a time. And again, when you start about one street at a time, if I can't find a parking space in my, my street, and that means I have my tag, but I go to the next street over, eventually, I'll try working back to my street where I can just park my car forever and not have to lose that spot. So there might be, we might start easing into storage again as a result. And then we have capacity, how many tags per household, which is all details, I mean.
That's why I think that it should have a sunset, no matter how long we decide that should be. And then we could do it again if it was good.
Bojenka?
Okay, now, I know I raised this before, and I know students are interested in this issue. I also think that there are people, and it was a person over on, who lived off East State, who had a couple of children and couldn't park for more than 24 hours. So, and I know that we cannot discriminate against people, but, you know, for handicap parking, we allow people to have special privilege. Okay, so I'm just wondering if there are certain people, maybe they're elderly, maybe they have, you know, a couple of young children, or they have some, you know, physical aspect that makes moving, running out and moving your car every 24 hours, or, you know, you're sick, you have little kids, and you're staying in the house for more than 24 hours, you know? And I know, I wonder if there's a way, and this doesn't solve the students' problem, of course, necessarily, but to at least, you know, look at it in terms of people who have physical need, rather than just a blanket street situation.
Carol?
There have been cases like that. Some of that has been addressed. When there have been extreme cases, they've called the Service Safety Director and-
Said, may I park on the street?
Called off the dogs, so to speak.
Oh, okay. Well, I think that's, you know, kind of important for people to know that when they have that situation, there is an option available to them. I think that's important.
Nancy?
With respect to the students, I think that if you're looking at rental property, the first question you have to ask is, even if there is parking behind the house, is it available to the students for nothing? And I think what you will find is that we have a lot of parking available for rent on top of the regular rental cost.
Well, that was one of the things that was discussed, too, in my note with the neighborhood, was how to educate, you know, like the fairgrounds parking that we have, how to educate the students who don't have off-street parking, how to accommodate or how to get that parking or what they need to do in terms of being able to park their car, you know, down at the fairgrounds and keeping it there instead of having to park it outside of their house and getting these tickets all the time. But then we're dealing with the attitude of, well, people want to be able to park their car right outside of where they live.
But that's not what you're talking about, right?
No, I'm saying that there are people who are paying premium price for rentals, and so the zoning board says they can go over here, or they're permitted 500 feet away. Well, it is a problem, because part of the problem is that when they're paying premium prices, how would they ever know? I mean, it's their first time renting. No, don't say that, Amy, it's true. It's the biggest problem. I won't go through those heartstrings for the rest, but I think that, you know, when we are requiring a parking place for each bedroom, it should go with the bedroom. Why are we not putting it with the bedroom? I'd like to find out if we can, say, if we're permitting a parking place per bedroom for rental property, then it should go there, and the total price should include that parking place. And if they want to rent it out, it should be their prerogative. But instead, the, they can go, they can say, oh, yeah, you can park down there three blocks on Congress Street, I have a lot there, and it'll cost you $85 a quarter. Or you can go down to Christ the King and park there, it'll cost you $65 a quarter. It just, you know, I mean, I think the students are the most abused of all the people, much more so than our hypothetical person who can't move the car every 24 hours.
Hey, that was a real person, it wasn't a hypothetical.
Well, I mean, I just think it's-
There are some real people.
Well, I know a lot of them, but I just think that the students are the ones that are getting exploited.
Debbie?
But hell, I also think that there's a larger public goal, right? If we do want to encourage people to walk and bike and reduce emissions and not crowd the streets and, you know, it's not just a matter of the convenience for the people who own the cars. You know, we, we signed the Cool Cities Agreement, and if there are ways that we can make it easier for people to be pedestrians and bicyclists, then that would be a good thing.
Encourage them to build a parking spot off the, off the street. Sure, yeah, I mean, the transportation issue is one that's comprehensive, you know, pedestrians, drivers, you know. Tell them to sell their turn 20 minutes.
Well, I mean, it's really important, but it's, it's just-
But no, it is really important.
But it's gonna take more than 9:00 to 9:30 on a day.
I'll forward you all the emails that I get about the 24-hour parking.
Yeah, well, I mean, everybody wants free parking.
Well, just adequate parking.
Well, adequate, that's how do you ever get it?
Adequate isn't even defined. Adequate isn't even defined. I mean, we have spots, not the fairgrounds, don't we?
Yeah, but who would ever know?
Well, I think that, well, that's the same as not knowing your garbage day, I guess.
Well, and that's all on your lease.
Yeah. All right, I rest my case.
Back-up landlord tenant education.
Paul.
Maybe we should segue into bicycle stuff.
Yes, bicycle safety. Oh, here's some, yeah. Thank you. Next is bicycle safety. And... Are we all in favor of that? Yes. You're riding a bike from now on. Yes, yeah, I saw it today. Well, I sat down with Ray Haslett and Andy Stone and Gary Hauser and myself last Wednesday, and we discussed what we can do with bicycle safety and how we can sort of fold it into the Transportation Task Force. At the same time, kind of making it, I think subcommittee is what we decided, we're gonna make this bicycle safety a subcommittee of the task force, where those who are interested in working on bicycle safety can focus their attention and energy on this issue. And I think that from newspaper articles and letters and correspondence with constituents that this is certainly an issue for this area, that people are very energized about and concerned about as well, as bicycle safety being an issue. So what I, after coming out of that meeting with Ray and Andy and Gary, proposed creating a bicycle safety subcommittee of the Transportation Task Force, because, and recognizing that the transportation issue is one that's comprehensive, wanting to keep all of that as central focal point. So what I did was sent out, sent out an email today to approximately twenty-five to thirty people who had been identified as people who wanted to be involved with this, or people who expressed interest or concern somewhere along the way. Sent out an email, sort of describing what the subcommittee would do, and kind of left it a little undefined, to where these people who are interested in the bicycle safety can kind of define what the subcommittee, what the objectives and the mission goals are for bicycle safety in Athens. And in doing that, looking at other example cities, using the resources that we have from Bojinka's class, using resources from spokes council and other groups that have really spent a lot of time and energy already on how Athens can improve in the way of bicycling. So, in that, I thought that one of the first moves in forming this subcommittee would be to have a conversation with council next week and kind of keep moving on this issue. Six o'clock, I figured, for the conversation with council?
I'll have to see if I can get the facilitator.
Okay. Somebody, I'm sure, would be available.
Is there enough time to get this info out? Is there enough time to get the info out about the conversation with council?
To get it out?
Yeah, to get people to come, to sort of be aware that it's going on.
I would think so. I mean, yes, yes. I mean, I already emailed the twenty-five, thirty people, asking them to then forward it on to everybody else that they knew who was interested. I mean, that's the...
And you're gonna have a representative of a person who has, is not a virtuous, but not a virtuous bike rider, but someone that wants to...
Yeah, we want, I mean, the idea of the subcommittee is to involve all perspectives. Student perspective, permanent resident perspective.
Humans are part of the environment, so they should be protected from air by bike riders.
Right. Well, we're basically...
Yes, humans will be there.
I was gonna say, we basically have...
Right, I know what you're saying.
One hour. So I'll get a facilitator, and then we can put it on the website that it's happening, and we'll send out a news release if it's not covered by the...
Yes. If it's not covered. Any questions or concerns or suggestions as far as that goes? And then hopefully, after this, we'll sort of give an example, then we'll move to like a pedestrian safety strategic planning subcommittee. And hopefully, get all these things intertwined and really start moving towards, you know, maybe bike lanes or more sidewalks, or whatever we decide would be feasible for the land and resources we have to work with in the city.
You gonna fix Bentley Hall?
Yes. Bentley is first on the list.
Okay. As long as you are. One last phone call.
Yes. One last thirty minutes on call. Next on the agenda is the parking garage, and I'm gonna turn it over to Carol.
Another suggestion, brainstorming type thing, although this one seems more simplistic to possibly make happen fairly soon. There are two separate proposals. We've had some conversations about lowering the price to twenty-five dollars a half hour to match...
Twenty-five cents.
I like twenty-five dollars.
That's a good way to get into a hang tag.
Well, I'm getting to hang tags. Anyway, twenty-five cents a half hour. Twenty-five cents a half hour. The same as on the street. That would mean some loss of revenue. Ray still has not gotten those exact figures, but he said he is putting them together. That is because, according to parking philosophies, your parking garage should really be less expensive than street parking, to encourage people to park there rather than right next to where they're going. The other issue is that the uptown businesses have commented quite a lot about not having places for their employees to park and so on. And one of the ideas that they really came up with in a current meeting was that they could have purchased some sort of hang tag, that would be good in the parking garage on such and such a floor during the daytime hours.
For their employees, I mean.
For their employees, yes. And Ray and I talked about that the rate could be a little bit less than the current rate. I believe the current rate is eighty-five dollars for a parking space, that's reserved space. So it would be considerably less than that.
For a year, what is it, per year? A month?
A month. Yes, sorry. But to have a space just so that they could park anywhere, which is preferable to a specific spot, because then you're not preventing anyone else from parking in that spot when that employee is not there and so on. So this seemed like a pretty reasonable solution. And Ray even tossed out the idea that perhaps we would have a rate and allow people to purchase those if they wanted to, just people-people, or we could restrict it to just uptown business employees, or we could give a better rate to uptown business employees than the other folks. So all of that's kind of out there.
Debbie. When we talked about this a couple weeks ago, I was kind of wondering about the idea of a, just like a paper hang tag that would be like a day pass, like if they bought a bunch of those and gave them out to employees. Because if you buy a monthly pass, that's a heck of a perk for them to give to each of their employees, a pass that's good, you know, anytime. And I wondered if there'd be something less expensive and more targeted if they, if they did day passes, that they gave their employees for however many days that week they were gonna be working, just to...
Well, the other thing that Ray was thinking is that the employer would probably buy a couple of these, and then whoever's working on a given day would sign it out and sign it in type of thing, or even trade off for shifts. But that they wouldn't purchase them for every single employee. That'd be a lot of people.
It would, and it made me worry about capacity a little bit.
But we can look at... Paul, something more to say?
Okay, so how does this differ from the smart cards? Let's say, purchasing one of those smart cards at a reduced rate?
Cheaper.
Cheaper? Because we don't have to pay for the cards?
No, I mean, cheaper for the employee. The smart cards, it's the same, it's twenty-five cents per half hour now, and that works out to six dollars a day.
But that's, okay.
Times three.
But the card, in terms of purchasing the card, I don't have a smart card, so I don't know how it works, actually. So at this point, you put, how to put money on the card right now is how?
You go down to utilities billing, and they put it on.
Okay, so if I was a business and I came in with my smart card and say, this is for my employee, it's a registered card, I wanna reduce rate on it, here's some money, you put more hours on it, you would need a different system than what we have now.
I certainly can ask that as well.
Okay. I'm just asking a question. The other thing, as I noticed, what the mayor gave us in terms of the parking garage funds, it looks like we're down a little bit from last year, is that the case? Okay. So are you seeing more reduction?
Would we? Because if people who are currently parking on the street to work would utilize the parking garage, it might be a plus.
Okay. Bojinka.
That's what I was gonna ask about, about capacity. Are all of the, I mean, would it fill up the garage so that there would be not enough spaces for people who might wanna park there? I have no idea. I mean, I guess, I mean, there's so little parking in this town, anyway.
Have you ever been above the third floor in the garage?
Yeah.
Yeah, no one's parked up there.
There is a third floor that is not used, and we could put a limit on the number that we allow to.
As long as we allow, leave enough to allow people.
Well, I think the upside would be there'd be spaces on the street, right? I mean, if these are people who are currently parking at meters on the street, the...
No, never.
The reason it came up in relation to the ordinance we just passed about the fines was, the argument was made to me that if employees who are not, you know, are relatively low-wage workers are parking at meters and they're working and their meter expires, that it is a regressive kind of tax for them to have to pay these increased fines. So I don't know if they need a reduced rate, even if the rate is the, of the, you know, if you did smart cards and the rate were the same in the meters, it would get the people who are needing to park for longer amounts of time in the garage and off the street, so they didn't have the two-hour issue. So another thing to explore.
Right. That would be considerably more expensive for them than what Ray was proposing.
But we would, if we had the regular spaces for nine hours, giving them a half hour on either side, or even a lunch hour, we would be making ninety dollars if the meter were stuffed all the time. And you're talking about how much money for those hang tags?
Well...
What was the proposal?
Eighty-five, was it?
He said sixty-five for daytime hours, and the theory...
Above of certain...
Right. And the theory is that they're not gonna be there all the time.
But eighty-five dollars, if you're making minimum wage, my goodness, I don't see how it can even... There's a lot of money, yeah. I think twice, and I'm way beyond minimum wage.
And that's also why the discussion was the employer might buy a couple of these and pass them around. Of course, the losing is another problem, but that it wouldn't be each employee who works three hours a day buying their own hang tag. That's not really what the uptown business folks were envisioning.
They were talking about not being able to meet the cost of the higher minimum wage, and I just can't see, you know, like another two-hundred a month being added onto that being even feasible. But we'll let them decide, huh?
Paul?
I think a lot of the employees end up parking their cars outside the meter zone, I mean, the North Congress and further up Forest Street. So whether this will change is another...
Right.
If there's a space up there.
Something to look into. I think it's a, it's definitely something...
We said we'd do it, so...
Yes.
Can we go ahead with changing the rate? So that it's the same, at least, if one less than on the street?
We can start that through, but I really would like to see those figures before we definitely finish it up, what the different rate is going to mean for us in terms of revenue for the parking garage. That's why I kind of see the two things as working together, because the filling up some of that fifth floor would be a revenue increase, at the same time that the twenty-five cents per half hour would be a decrease in income.
In terms of parking garage, do we have any projection on what kind of maintenance we'll need in the future? Because this, what you're talking about is eventually, you know, it's gonna affect our budget for that. Is there anything out there in terms of...
Not off the top of my head, I mean, there is...
There are issues, I know that.
There are issues, and there are things that we would like to be able to do now, but we're spinning down the...
I know, you're trying to get the...
I think we've got, I was thinking it was fifteen thousand budgeted for maintenance this year, but we'll have to monitor that, because, as we have it inspected every year, so that we get a list of what things need to be done. And we power wash it a couple times a year, and then look at it that way. But we really need some work on the drainage systems.
The pipes.
The pipes, yes.
I noticed.
Is it an engineering firm this time?
I'm not a contractor or an engineer, but I can't imagine that it would need as extensive as we have before.
If there was some growing on concrete outside, you can visibly see that.
Anything else about the parking garage? Okay, no. Miscellaneous? Anybody have any miscellaneous?
Nope.
I had to have one miscellaneous item. I don't really know if it goes on any transportation, but the beautification day happened on Saturday. It was amazing. Went out there, they did a tremendous job putting it together, drove around the city that day, saw lots of groups out working on things that just, I mean, it looked like they had a lot of fun, too, so it was a very productive and pleasant thing for those groups to get involved with. And I'll have Greg come give us a report, maybe in a week or two, as to how exactly it went, and if they met their expectations, and just look forward to doing it again next year. Paul?
We're still on spring cleaning this week, so get your extra bags out.
Carol?
Couple of little things. Also, on Saturday, there was a event, I don't know if you were all aware of it, the opening day at the Sandlot Ballparks, and there were thousands of people down there. I've never seen so many kids in my life. So just an amazing event for their opening day of the Sandlot season. And I want to know if council would be willing to come in at seven on, do we have any hearings on the seventh?
There's a presentation.
Right. And that's at seven. And that usually doesn't take very long, right?
Depends if they come or not.
What I'd like to do is schedule after that, before our meeting starts, is the Halloween presentation. Paige Alast has been working with the students. I was very pleased to see that of the one group, the smaller group that I worked with, all of the students contacted Paige about that. Now, they're not all around still, but they did contact her and comment, and Paige has been meeting with Jonathan and the students, and would like to present to council concept.
So why can't we have that at a regular committee meeting? Because, you know, she's a talker, and we're gonna end up at eight o'clock, and...
Well, not if she is told that about fifteen minutes.
But it is worth, it's worth...
The reason for wanting it sooner rather than later is because she would like to have decided within May, kind of where we're going for this year's Halloween, so that the students complete their portion before they leave for the summer. That's gotta be in May, and May seventh is our next meeting.
Yeah, why not just have a special day? Because otherwise, it's gonna bleed over into our meeting. I mean, that's the trouble with having people do presentations that go on for hours.
I don't think they go in for hours, but we have a special meeting on Monday, right?
Look at the two that were here today, I had no control of them.
She said after May first, she wasn't going to be ready till May first, so next Monday won't do it. She will not be ready. That's why I suggested the seventh.
But that's a council meeting. Can't we just go one more week and then have it then?
You want to do it on the eighth on Election Day?
Yeah, that'd be a good thing.
I'm kidding, I was kidding.
No, I, I think we have to move forward with Halloween.
Is this gonna take money? I mean, is that why we're doing this? No?
It's gonna take money.
Of course it's gonna take money.
Well, I don't know if it's worth it.
But they need some direction, and we need to hear what's happened, what we do.
We won't be able to give them direction.
But I mean, but if we're doing it in fifteen minutes, we're not gonna know what...
But we'll hear what they've got, just so that we can begin processing it. That's all she wants to do. She wants to come in and give a presentation of kind of what progress they've made and what questions they want to, for us to start considering.
And I think it's important. I do, too.
So you two guys can do this up a day.
All right. Can we read the Stewart Street Resolution next Monday?[1780.16]